Good morning and welcome to the New York City Landmarks Preservation Commission's Public Hearing and Public Meeting of May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. We'll begin this morning by taking attendance, and I'll ask our General Counsel, Mark Silverman, to call the roll.
Chair Carroll.
Here.
Vice Chair Bland.
Here.
Commissioner Chafin.
Here.
Commissioner Chen. Commissioner Chu. Commissioner Ginsburg.
Here.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Here.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Here.
Lieutenant. Commissioner Mast.
Right. Good morning again, and welcome to our public hearing and public meeting. We have a full agenda today. We are going to begin with some public, two public hearings for proposed designations, and then we will have a public hearing on proposed amendments to our rules, and then we will move to our here agendas for applications for work on designated properties, and we will also have a vote on a proposed designation. And this meeting is being held in person at our hearing, in our hearing room at One Center Street. It is also being livestreamed on our YouTube channel and being held via Zoom for anyone who would like to participate remotely. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our Director of Research, Kate Limos-Michel, to take us through the proposed designations.
Thank you, Sarah. Good morning. Item. Number one this morning on our public hearing agenda is LP two, six, eight, one, Temple Court Building, now the Beekman Hotel atrium at five Beekman Street, AKA three to nine Beekman Street, one nineteen to one thirty-three Nassau Street and ten Theater Alley, Manhattan Block ninety, lot seven, five oh three. This public hearing is on the proposed designation of a nine-story atrium as defined by a line established by the exterior walls of the second-story gallery, descending to the first story and ascending to the ninth story and terminating in a glazed cast iron skylight, and the fixtures and interior components of the space, which may include but are not limited to the floor, wall, and ceiling surfaces, glazing doors and trim, cast iron staircase and stone treads from first to ninth floor, with decorative pressed metal paneling and cast iron grill work, cast iron galleries with balustrades, decorative supporting brackets, and caustic tile flooring, pressed metal ceiling plates, and double-leaf floor hatches, and flat and round arched door and window openings. And presenting this morning is Mary Anne Percival.
Good morning, Commissioners. The Temple Court Building, now the Beekman Hotel atrium, is a stunning nine-story skylit atrium, an early and rare surviving example of a nineteenth-century office building interior built around such a feature. Long enclosed and inaccessible to the public, it was sensitively rehabilitated to become the central feature of the Beekman Hotel in two thousand sixteen. The combination of carefully restored historic elements and finely crafted plaster and millwork. The combination of carefully restored historic elements and finely crafted plaster and millwork based on surviving examples have returned this historic space to its former glory. The proposed interior is a main feature of the Temple Court Building at the corner of Beekman and Nassau Streets, which was designated a New York City individual landmark in nineteen ninety-eight. The Temple Court Building, originally to be called the Kelly Building for its owner, the Irish-American merchant banker Eugene Kelly, was designed in eighteen eighty-one by the firm of Siliman and Farnsworth, and was among the first significant office buildings erected after eighteen ninety-seven, eighteen seventy-nine, excuse me, as the city recovered from the financial panic of eighteen seventy-three. When it opened in eighteen eighty-three, the building included more than two hundred offices, all opening onto the elaborately decorated galleries that encircled the central atrium below, a pyramidal skylight. The success of the building fed Kelly to commit, to commission a ten-story annex to the left of the red line here on the left street, left photograph. The success of the build, um, design, which was designed by Farnsworth in eighteen eighty-nine and completed the following year. The building and the annex together were designated a New York City individual landmark, again, eighteen, nineteen ninety-eight. In the nineteenth century, interior atriums became a popular feature in arcades, hotels, libraries, exhibit halls, department stores, and office buildings, since the volume allowed for both natural light and an enclosed, usually grand and often highly decorative space. The first use of the atrium in the United States was the Arcade Building in Providence, Rhode Island, built in eighteen twenty-eight by James C. Buckland and Russell Warren, and by mid-century, its popularity spread to New York, where it was used in the now demolished A.T. Stewart Department Store at Broadway and East Tenth Street, designed by John Calum in eighteen fifty-nine and completed in eighteen sixty-two. At the end of the nineteenth century, the full-height skylit atrium was a prominent feature of office and commercial buildings across the country. Some surviving examples include the Brown Palace Hotel in Denver and the Bradbury Building in Los Angeles. Surviving examples of nineteenth-century full-height atria are exceedingly rare. The interior of the Surrogates Court at thirty-one Chamber Street, an example of the atrium whose skylight was placed many stories below the top of the light court, is an interior landmark from the same era as the Temple Court Building. The atrium returned in the mid-twentieth century is exemplified by the Ford Foundation on East Forty-second Street, which has also been designated a New York City individual and interior landmark. The atrium of the Temple Court Building is the only known surviving nineteenth-century atrium of this scale and height in New York City. As described in the New York Times in April eighteen eighty-one, the ground floor, including part of the atrium, was to be occupied by two stores and a long entrance hall from the Beekman Street entrance, while the upper stories were to be fully open to the skylight. The Temple Court Building, now the Beekman Hotel atrium, includes eight tiers of galleries surrounded by arched door and window openings, encaustic tile flooring, and cast iron skylight. From the third to the ninth story, the historic galleries feature ornamental cast iron balustrades anchored at the corners by heavy newels. Thin spindle-like balusters support the cast iron panels decorated with stylized flowers, supporting the galleries or brackets with cutwork decoration at the corners, and cast iron dragons along the sides. Tapping the atrium, the historic skylight features decorative cutwork ornament in the beams and delicate filigree in the panels of the upper and lower monitors. The footprints and roofs of the stores that historically occupied the first story can be seen in these photographs. The circle, the circa twenty thousand images, image on the left shows the, how the upper galleries, considered a fire hazard, have been enclosed since the nineteen fifties above the second floor. As part of the earlier uncompleted conversion project in two thousand and five, the stores and partitions of the first stories and along with the galleries above were removed. The photos on the right show the conditions prior to the rehabilitation begun in nineteen, in twenty thousand and thirteen. From two thousand thirteen to two thousand sixteen, the historic atrium was rehabilitated as part of the conversion of the Temple Court Building into the Beekman Hotel by GFI Development LLC, the architectural firm of Gerner, Kronik, and Valcarcel, and Higgins, Quaysbarth, and Partners. The upper galleries were restored, and the first story became the Beekman Hotel's bar and lounge, with its design recalling decorative elements found elsewhere in the atrium. Along the galleries, the historic arched openings of former office spaces have been maintained along with the flat-headed openings over the hallways connecting to the annex. Surviving examples of the plaster work, door and window enframents, and the door and window units informed the restoration, and the arrangement of doors and windows was configured to accommodate the layout of hotel rooms. The floors of the galleries were historically covered with incaustic tiles, except for the double-leaf metal hatches, which allowed office tenants to hoist furniture and safes. Historic tiles are largely original. New tiles have been added where necessary to recreate the historic pattern, and bespoke carpet runners have been added. The galleries from the third through the ninth story are historic. The second-story gallery walkways shown here had incorporated the roofs of the stores on the east and west sides and part of the north side. A circa two thousand and five alteration removed all but the historic gallery at the south side and the double hatch above the vestibule on the north side. In the two thousand sixteen, the second-story gallery was rebuilt using glass blocks set in concrete that recalled the roofs of the stores, and the balustrade was recreated with glass panels etched with the same pattern as found on the historic galleries above. Access to the galleries was by means of a trio of elevators and a cast iron staircase with decorative panels and grill work. As part of the renovation, new elevator enclosures were created and decorated with the arched millwork reminiscent of that originally found in the building. The historic cast iron staircase still encircles the central elevator shaft and contains decorative panels and grill work. In order to maintain the atrium as an open space, an innovative groundbreaking fire safety system consisting of sprinklers and smoke curtains was designed specifically for the Beekman Hotel and implemented here. To safely minimize the spread of smoke, fire-rated curtains drop down to the floor of each gallery from a panel hidden behind the balustrade above, and transparent glass panels help seal gaps between the curtains at the four corners. Although at the ninth story, the curtains drop from a nonhistoric glass canopy over the gallery that enables them to meet naturally at the corners. The proposed landmark site consists of the volume defined by the atrium galleries, from the first floor up to and including the skylight, including the galleries and the surrounding walls, and decorative features facing into the atrium, east and west hallways connecting to the annex, the seconds through eighth stories, and the historic cast iron staircase from the first through ninth stories. The Temple Court Building's unique surviving nineteenth-century commercial atrium has been sensitively rehabilitated as the incredible centerpiece of the Beekman Hotel, with its historic elements lovingly restored and where necessary reproduced to recreate the space's historic ambiance.
Thank you very much, Mary Anne. Commissioners, before we move to testimony, does anyone have any questions on this item? We've had a little, a few questions at the calendary, so I think we're probably don't have any questions today. So while we normally start with in-person testimony first, I do understand that the owner has signed up to speak and is participating remotely, so I would like to move to the owner first, and then we'll come back to the in-person testimony.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Carroll. First up, we will be hearing from Eric Bass. Eric Bass, I will be promoting you to panelist right now. Okay. And once promoted, please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
This is our. Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Eric Bass, GFI Development. Excuse me, we're the owner of the Beekman Hotel, the Temple Court Building.
Eric, I'm sorry, you're not coming in very clearly. Is there possibly a room that's a little bit quieter?
Yeah, hold on. Can you hear me now okay?
A little bit better, but it's muffled.
Hold on one second. I apologize. How about now?
Good. Yeah.
Okay, great. So we're the owner of the building. We bought it in two thousand twelve, and as you can see from the pictures in the presentation, we basically walked into an empty shell. We worked very closely with the architects, the engineers, Higgins, Quaysbarth, to restore the atrium, to put all the necessary life safety systems in, and to bring it back to what it used to look like back in eighteen eighty-one. Lot of challenges along the way. It was basically a labor of love, this project. The building was powered up by an extension cord and a garden hose, so we had to bring all the new services into play, electric, water, gas, and like the commission research people said, we put in a very complex fire protection system to create egress out of the building for hospitality function. Just, we welcomed the designation of the space when the LPC Chair came to us, and we're very proud to be a steward of it. We just need to be able to maintain the nonhistoric aspects of it across the fire protection system, you know, in the future, under obviously the LPC auspices, but, you know, the nonhistoric functions do need to be maintained and possibly, you know, replaced when they wear out or whatnot. And we just want to be sure that the future of that building under LPC jurisdiction, we are able to do that, you know, in a proper manner. But I just want to say for the record that we welcome the designation, and we're very much a proponent of historic designation. We own a few individual landmarks in New York City and Manhattan, and, but the Beekman really is the crown jewel of all of them, and we're very proud to be the steward of it and to have restored it to what it looks like in all the pictures. It was a real challenge with a cast of thousands, and LPC was a very integral part of that back in two thousand thirteen and fourteen, to get to where you see what we have. And that's really all I needed to say, and I appreciate the opportunity, and thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much for your testimony.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you. All right, we're now going to move to in-person testimony. We have two people who have signed up, and we'll start with Ward Dennis.
As you just heard from Eric Bass, HQ Service, Preservation Consultant for the Restoration HQ, the building's best work on. Walled off for fifty years. That atrium was for years a sort of secret wonder. You were the floor was on the second floor, you could go in, you could just walk in and see it, but it was, you know, it was closed off to the public, and we're lucky that it's generally cheaper to buy things than to polish them, so wonders of the preservation. And that was the case of the Temple Court Building, many of the foundations survived, but there's terrible damage. The restoration work made possible by historic preservation tax credits and air rights transfers, included replication of historic plaster finishes, replication of historic millwork, and restoration of all ceiling finishes. Everything was carefully documented, executed, and I should note that the location of the masonry opening on north, east, and west walls are historic, but the bein build has been modified for hotel use for windows located where they are based on hotel requirements. Overall, this project required, overall, this project required cooperation and approval of many agencies at the local, state, and federal level in order to make the atrium usable and not have it walled off for another fifty years. That included FDNY, DOV, LPC, SHPO, NPS, and even the IRS, all had a hand in this. So the project worked because of tax credits and air rights transfers. We're happy to see that at all the work, and the atrium will now be a New York City interior landmark, and just want to acknowledge the help of operation of landmarks and great work that came.
Right. The next speaker is George Calderaro.
Morning, Commissioners. I'm George Calderaro, a board member of the Victorian Society New York. The Victorian Society encourages and applauds the proposed interior designation of the Temple Court Building. The magnificent neoclassical Renaissance and Queen Anne Building is an ideal example of the exuberant architecture of the Victorian era. We also applaud the preservation consultants Higgins and Quaysbarth, the owner-developer G.B. Lodging and architect Gerner and Valcars. We especially appreciate that Higgins and Quaysbarth secured the aforementioned city, state, and federal tax credits that were used brilliantly to restore and recreate the historic building. This magnificent project should serve as an example of the business and aesthetic benefits of preservation. The building should also serve as an example of the benefits indeed for landmark designation of historic hotels. At this moment, several massive distinctive hotels, including the Roosevelt Hotel, are facing the wrecking ball despite the fact that according to the city, city government, among many others, we're in a housing crisis. Preservation and landmarks protection should be used as a tool to face this crisis as opposed to current proposals which simply remove regulation. The magnificent Hotel Pennsylvania qualified as a landmark architecturally, historically, and culturally, yet its two thousand rooms are landfill, and the block-wide site promises to be a vacant lot for the rest of our lives, like many sites of demolished designation-worthy buildings in Midtown and around the city. I know that this is the Landmarks Commission, not the City Planning Commission, but this agency should be a partner with other city agencies in fostering adaptive reuse or continued use of viable, would-be, should-be landmarks, notably including several Manhattan hotels, which could use the Beekman Hotel as a model. Thank you.
Thank you. Right. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to testify on this item? All right, not seeing anyone else. I'm going to turn it back to Gregory to see if we have any other remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. We have a couple of remote participants in the Zoom meeting. The first we'll be hearing from is Andrea Goldwin from the New York Landmarks Conservancy. Andrea Goldwin, I have promoted you to panelist. So please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Good morning, Chair Carroll and Commissioners. I'm Andrea Goldwin, speaking on behalf of the New York Landmarks Conservancy. The Conservancy is pleased to support designation of the Temple Court Building's atrium as an interior landmark. We also supported designation of the building as an individual landmark in nineteen ninety-seven. At that point, Temple Court was quite deteriorated inside and out. Sidebar off the statement, I had the opportunity to be in the building at that time. It was a little spooky, a little stinky, a little scary. Back to the statement, New York is lucky that in the years since, the owner who you just heard from took a risk on this landmark, restoring the facade and converting the building to hotel use, with a vision to recognize that the atrium, boarded up for decades, could be the central attraction. The Restoration and Adaptive Use Project received a Lucy Moses Award in two thousand seventeen. In addition to the picturesque facade and the dramatic interior, Temple Court has a history of technical innovation. As the LPC report notes, the building merited designation for its architecture and its role in New York history, and because it was the earliest surviving, essentially unaltered, tall, fireproof New York office building prior to development of the skyscraper. The more recent restoration project deserved a merit for the excellent quality of the work and for once again advancing fire safety technology. Designation will ensure that any future alterations maintain this legacy of excellent architecture and outstanding preservation. Thank you for the opportunity to express the Conservancy's views.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we will be hearing from Lucy Levine from the Historic Districts Council. Lucy Levine, I am promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic Districts Council. As the citywide advocate for New York's architectural, historical, and cultural neighborhoods, the Historic Districts Council supports the designation of the Temple Court Building, now the Beekman Hotel atrium, as an interior landmark. We are thrilled that this spectacular space, which was hidden from view for decades, has been restored and open to the public, and that it will now be designated. This building is already an individual landmark. Designed by Skelman and Farnsworth and built between eighteen eighty-one and eighteen eighty-three, the Temple Court Building was a pioneer in tall office building construction, one of the city's first fireproof structures, and an early experiment in the skyscraper form. The building's atrium, though once a common feature of buildings of this age, is now exceedingly rare. The remarkable restoration completed in two thousand sixteen not only highlights this rarity, but also restores the space to its spectacular beauty. There is no other space like this in New York, and we are excited that it will be protected and publicly accessible. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I do not see any further hand raised in the attendees list, so I will bring it back to you, Chair Carroll.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate all of the testimony. Commissioners, do we have any other final questions before we move? Okay, so we cannot vote to close the hearing at this time. We will bring it back later when we have a quorum in person, but I again want to thank everyone who participated, and as always with designations, we will continue to accept written testimony up until the vote. So with that, we'll move to the next public hearing item.
Item number two this morning is One Wall Street Banking Room Interior at One Wall Street, Manhattan Block twenty-three, lot seven, five oh one, AKA lot seven, in part. The item proposed for a public hearing is the proposed designation of the former banking hall and reception room of the Irving Trust Company at One Wall Street, designed in the Art Deco style by Ralph Walker in nineteen thirty-one, and featuring elaborate mosaic tile wall and ceiling finishes designed by Hildreth Mier, consisting of the building's northernmost room and its fixtures and interior components, which may include but are not limited to the historic wall surfaces, ceiling surfaces, floor surfaces, columns, vestibule, lighting fixtures, attached furnishings, doors, windows, decorative metalwork, and attached decorative elements. Presenting is Lisa Buckley.
Good morning. I'm Lisa Buckley from the Research Department. Completed in nineteen thirty-one, the banking room of One Wall Street was conceived by architect Ralph Walker and muralist Hildreth Mier as the impressive reception room and banking hall of the Irving Trust Company. This extraordinary elaborately tiled space known as the Red Room was the first of several interior collaborations between Mier and Walker, and is the only abstract mosaic mural by Mier, whose designs typically included allegorical figures executed in an Art Deco manner. One Wall Street, a designated individual landmark, is located at the intersection of Broadway and Wall Street in the heart of Manhattan's financial district. The banking room occupies the north end of the first floor of the building. The proposed landmark site is illustrated here, outlined in red. The One Wall Street building, originally the Irving Trust Company building, now known as the Bank of New York building, was designated a landmark in two thousand one and sensitively converted to residential and retail use in two thousand twenty-two. The stunning former banking hall interior is the building's original public reception space and remains incredibly intact. Ralph Walker, the architect of One Wall Street, was a principal of Doris Schmelton and Walker. Walker was one of New York's most noteworthy designers of Art Deco high-rise buildings. He became known for designing buildings for telecommunications companies, including several buildings for AT&T as well as other groups. Harry Coke Smith, Ralph Walker's assistant in charge of the banking room, went on to become a partner in the firm in nineteen thirty-eight. His notable architectural designs include the Mud Engineering Building at Columbia University. Hildreth Mier was a highly talented and accomplished muralist proficient in a variety of mediums. Mier's impressive body of work includes painted and mosaic murals in churches and synagogues throughout the country, as well as the rondelles of the facade of Radio City Music Hall. as well as the rondelles of the facade of Radio City Music Hall. Mier was admired for her ability to understand how to effectively collaborate with architects, which led to many successful commissions. Mier's work in the 1920s and early 1930s on the Nebraska State Capitol Building embodied themes of classical Native American imagery. In New York City, Mier's mosaics braced the interiors of St. Bartholomew's Church and Temple Emmanuel. After One Wall Street, Walker and Mier next collaborated on the AT&amp;T Long Distance Building Lobby and thereafter on several subsequent buildings for other corporate interests. Construction of One Wall Street commenced in 1929 and was completed in 1931. The decorative concept was developed by Walker, who engaged Mier to work on the banking hall mural. Abstract designs were a departure from Mier's typically representative murals and mosaics, both preceding and after. She collaborated with Smith to develop the color gradations and scale of the design. The tile was manufactured in Berlin and shipped on paper backing for installation. The aim of the designers was to create a room that was warm and inviting, contrasting the cold marble of earlier banking halls. While there is a repeating motif throughout the room, its irregular shape means that each service appears distinctive and unique. Each elevation was designated with an alphanumeric code that was stamped on individual tiles to indicate their installation location. The Irving Trust and Bank Company and its successor firms occupied the building and continued to use the banking room until 2014. As you can see in these photographs, the room has had several different configurations, originally sparsely furnished and by the mid-century carpeted, in red of course, and furnished with symmetrical rows of desks. The banking room's undulating walls and ceiling gleam with intricate mosaic tile and warm colors that begin in ox blood red near the floor and fade upward to orange across the ceiling. These colored tiles are all intertwined with web-like patterns of gold tiles that create a striking verticality. The walls mimic the curved stone facades of the Art Deco skyscraper's exterior. The design of the room overlooks no details. Pictured here are examples of the meticulously designed heating grates located throughout the room. The banking hall remains largely unchanged since its construction. Minor changes made to the space are limited to updated lighting fixtures, covering of the tiled floors, ceiling penetrations for light fixtures and sprinklers, and some replacement heating grates. The current owners undertook a full restoration of the former banking hall. It was temporarily used as the sales office for the condominiums occupying the upper stories of the building and is now being converted to retail space. Commissioners, you may recall a recent application for exterior applications to the building, including changes to the entry vestibule in this space. This will be carried out as part of ongoing rehabilitation work, including restoring the transparency of the monumental windows and reversible furnishing installations. Representing the work of masters of their fields, the banking room of One Wall Street is a striking and rare example of an abstract mosaic by Mier and an elaborate stylistic departure from the typical stone-clad banking hall. Because of its historical and architectural significance, the One Wall Street Banking Room Interior is proposed as an interior landmark.
Thank you very much. Right Commissioners, before we move to testimony, do we have any questions on this item? All right, we'll move to testimony and as always we'll start with people who have signed up in person and then we'll move to any remote participants. So I have three people who signed up. We're going to start with Jeffrey Yachmetz.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to come before you and speak in support of this application. My name is Jeffrey Yachmetz, I'm a representative of the building ownership. For the better part of a decade, we have systematically restored this building to what it was as an architectural jet. The application you have before you, the interior of the Red Room designation, is the next step in that application of what we impart. We have taken upon ourselves to restore this room, bring it back, and give it back to the public for access and for them to enjoy it as much as it was before. Together with our partners, the building has been designed in a sense to really essentially be its original glory, its original design, and look forward to opening it for future generations. We're fully in support of this application and thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, we have Anna Kupick.
Who was, she was one of the most renowned muralists of the 20s. During her 40-year career from the 1920s until her death in 1961, she created over 100 secular literate works across 18 states. She worked with leading architects of her day such as Bertrand Boeckhew and Ralph Walker as well as master builder Raphael Wassabini-Junk. At the start of her career, she decorated the Nebraska State Capitol in Lincoln and the National Academy of Sciences in Washington DC. Her best-known New York City area commissions include the rondelles on the exterior facade of Radio City Music Hall, One Wall Street, St. Bartholomew's Church, Temple Emmanuel, St. Patrick's Cathedral, and 32 Avenue Americas. At the end of her career, she created many mosaic designs for the Beadle Basilica of St. Louis, which contains the artist's collection of mosaic work in the western hemisphere. Hildreth was known for willingness to explore new materials, designing for a variety of mediums ranging from glaze ceramic tile to mixed metal and enamel stained glass. In 1928, Hildreth received an gold medal in mural decoration from the architectural medium her design within the Nebraska State Capitol. The American Institute of Architects awarded Hildreth its Fine Arts Medal in 1956, recognizing her as a master of murals. She prided herself on having a stylish career as both a muralist and businesswoman, who as she would say, had the run of business as well as conceived and paid decorations. Reliability was key. Architect Ralph Walker, who frequently collaborated with her, summed up why he liked her work. She will take any commission to give her and work it out without any help from you. Clean quality, good craftsmanship, material intelligent means. Once the job is in her hands, you can forget about it, assure that it will be done within a time. Hildreth started her collaboration with Ralph Walker in Berlin and collaborated with him on several other projects, including the lobby ceiling at 32 Avenue Americas and New York and Chicago's World Fairs in the 1930s. The interior of the Red Room at One Wall Street showcased the extraordinary artistic and architectural collaboration between Hildreth, Ralph Walker, and Perry Koch Smith. Their combined efforts reflect a unique cultural and historical significance that merits preservation. By granting interior landmark status to the Red Room, this remarkable example of early 20th century decorative art and architecture will be protected and appreciated for generations to come. If approved, the Red Room would join 19 other landmark designations, protecting the just work across the country. In the New York City area, it would join this impressive landmark group. The Fordham University Church, Radio City Music Hall, St. Thomas Church, St. Bartholomew's Church, St. Patrick's Cathedral, Temple Emmanuel, the AT&amp;T Long Distance Building, also known as 32 Avenue Americas, both interior and exterior, and of course, the exterior landmark of One Wall Street. Thank you for considering this request of the interior landmarking of the Red Room at One Wall Street. It's a crucial step in preserving the legacy and artists' allure and the architectural design heritage of Mier's.
Thank you very much. Next, we have George Calderaro.
Hello again Commissioners, I'm George Calderaro, now representing the Art Deco Society of New York as a board member. The Art Deco Society is thrilled to testify in support of the interior landmark designation of One Wall Street, AKA The Red Room. The interior represents the work of masters of their fields, architects Voorhees, Melon, and Walker, who commissioned the room, and designers Ralph Walker, Perry Koch Smith, and Hildreth Mier. It is an elaborate departure from the typical stone-clad banking hall. The striking hall is a rare example of an abstract mosaic and the only one by Mier. The banking room demonstrates how even without allegorical or religious imagery, Mier was able to combine color and scale imaginatively to create an extraordinary Art Deco space. With designation of this interior, the Red Room would join Mier's official and unofficial landmarks treasured, painted, and mosaic murals throughout the United States, as well as spectacular examples noted here in New York, including the Radio City Music Hall, the AT&amp;T Long Distance Building, St. Bartholomew's Church, and Temple Emmanuel, among others. We applaud the Commission on overcoming any doubts, objections, or opposition over many decades that may have prevented the Red Room's designation as a most worthy interior landmark. We're likewise thrilled that the Red Room's next life will be as a centerpiece of a frequently publicly accessible Pratton department store pairing with the store's renowned elaborate interiors in Paris. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? All right, not seeing anyone else in the room to speak. I will turn it over to Gregory to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you Chair Carol. Okay, we have a few remote participants in the attendees list. The first we'll be hearing from is Andrea Goldwyn from the New York Landmarks Conservancy. Andrea Goldwyn, I am promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning again Chair Carol and Commissioners, I'm Andrea Goldwyn speaking on behalf of the New York Landmarks Conservancy. The Conservancy is pleased to support designation of the One Wall Street Banking Room Interior. The building and former banking hall and reception room were designed in the Art Deco style by Ralph Walker, completed in 1931, but Hildreth Mier devised the beautiful and elaborate red and gold mosaic finishes that led to this space being known as the Red Room. Many banking halls project a sense of solid reliability, but this unique interior expresses the power of the bank in a different way. Among all of Mier's work, this one is even more special. Unlike a more typical wall or ceiling mosaic that illustrates a subject, the design here is abstract, completely and definitively capturing the room. The Red Room is one of the most exquisite spaces in New York and certainly merits designation. Even the very good photos that are part of this presentation only hint at its splendor. We support the designation of One Wall Street when it was heard in 1998 and at the time also urged designation of the interior. Like many New Yorkers, we worried about this unprotected gem but are happy to commend the past and especially current owners for their stewardship of the space. The Red Room was recently restored as part of a project to convert the tower for residential use, which received a Lucy Moses Award in 2022. As the room is being adapted for retail use, the guidance of the Commission will only help in ensuring that it retains its unique and special qualities. Thank you for bringing this designation forward and thank you for the opportunity to express the Conservancy's views.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we'll be hearing from Lucy Levine from the Historic Districts Council. Lucy Levine, I am promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi Commissioners, my name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic Districts Council. As the citywide advocate for New York's architectural, historical, and cultural neighborhoods, the Historic Districts Council supports the designation of the One Wall Street Banking Room Interior as an individual landmark. HTC has organized several tours of this spectacular space through the involvement of the International Hildreth Mier Association. We thank them for their outstanding stewardship of Mier's legacy and we are thrilled that this space is finally being designated and will once again be open to the public. The One Wall Street Banking Room Interior is best known as the Red Room for the glorious and electrifying abstract mosaic decoration designed by Hildreth Mier, which defines the space. Mier, who was recognized by her colleagues at the AIA as a master of murals, undertook over 100 such projects throughout her life. The Red Room stands out as one of Mier's only abstract designs and also as her first collaborative project with Ralph Walker. The two would next work together on the AT&amp;T Long Distance Building at 32 Sixth Avenue, which has been both an individual and interior landmark since 1991. Though the designation report for that interior does not mention Mier's work, we are thrilled that Mier's contribution is being recognized here. Indeed, it is quite fitting that this Commission, as a municipal agency, should recognize Mier's work for she had a profound impact on the city of New York. Among her posts and honors, Mier was the first woman appointed to the New York City Art Commission, served six terms as the first vice president of the Architectural League of New York, and sat on the boards of the Art Students League, the Municipal Art Society, and the Advisory Committee of the Cooper Union Art School. We believe that Mier's clear understanding of the import of public interiors should guide this Commission. Mier explained, "A good mural should be something that cannot be taken away without hurting the design of the building. If the building can look as well without it, it shouldn't be there in the first place." One Wall Street would be profoundly impoverished without the Red Room. Indeed, One Wall Street would not be the same building without it. That logic holds for many of New York's unique public interiors, which are often the most beloved parts of the city's most beloved buildings because they are open to the public. As we celebrate the designation of the public interior at One Wall Street, we note the loss nearby of the public interior at 60 Wall Street. We wish that this Commission had understood, as Mier did, that such a space could not be taken away without hurting the design of the building. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we will be hearing from Casimir Sedanius. Casimir Sedanius, I am promoting you to panelist right now. And once you are a panelist, please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. Thank you. Casimir Sedanius, are you with us?
Yes, it's Casimir Sedanius of Grimshaw Architects.
Yes, you had... Are you providing testimony for One Wall Street or?
No, no, I'm for the next agenda items, so I'm not sure why you called my name.
Okay, yes, you had your hand raised in the attendees list, so I will...
Oh, that wasn't intended. Apologies.
Okay, thank you very much. And that's all, so that is all the testimony and I will just note for the record that Manhattan Community Board One recommended approval. And with that, I'm going to bring it back to you Chair Carol.
Thank you very much Gregory. Right, I want to thank everyone for your thoughtful testimony today and it's wonderful to hear from the owners and from the Hildreth Mier Foundation Association. So thank you so much for being here today. And we will bring this item back to close the hearing later in the afternoon, but as always, we'll accept written testimony up until the date that we vote, which will be in the near future. So thank you all and we'll move to the next public hearing agenda item.
Morning everyone, we're going to start today's preservation apartment agenda with public hearing item number one. This is a proposal to initiate rulemaking pursuant to the City Administrative Procedures Act. This is proposed amendments to Chapter Two of Title 63 of the Rules of the City of New York, consisting of amendments to existing rules, including amendments relating to the installation of bus shelters. This was calendared at the public meeting of April 9, 2024. This was calendared at the public meeting of April 9, 2024.
Good morning, Commissioners. Today, staff is presenting proposed rules for the bus shelter installations. The Commission voted to calendar the proposed rules for consideration in April. The rules are related to the city's franchise agreement for the installation of street furniture. So first, we're going to have representatives from the Department of Transportation to review their approach to bus shelter installation and the franchise agreement, and then I'll walk you through LPC's staff's proposed rules. So with that, I'll turn it over to Nick Petnati with DOT.
Thank you, Leanne. Good morning, Chair Carol, Commissioners. My name is Nick Petnati. I'm Deputy Director of Urban Design at DOT and liaison to the Commission. Good to see you all again. It was here, it feels like, not that long ago. I'm going to move through the presentation relatively quickly. Obviously, we have time for testimony and questions. So we're here today to talk about the bus shelters. I'm sure many of you have seen them throughout the city. They are ubiquitous at this point. Just a little bit of history first. So the current agreement, the current shelters that you see out there commenced in 2006. It was originally awarded to a company called Samusa, and that changed control in 2015 to the current operator, which is JC DeCo. The whole focus of the coordinated street furniture franchise is a coordinated design. So that's why the bus shelters look like the newsstands, that look like the automatic public toilets. As you'll note, there are advertisements on those structures. They fund the franchise. So there's no city dollars that go into it. It is funded and maintained by the operator. And one of the reasons that we're here is we just passed an amendment that extends this franchise to 2031. So a chance to sort of revisit things and ultimately catch up. Going all the way back, as far as we can tell, and we thank members from LPC staff for doing a little bit of research for us as well. Bus shelters go back, as far as we can tell, to the 1940s, with shelters that have advertising since at least the 1960s. And then there are also references that the shelters haven't been updated since at least the 70s, as we were approaching the new franchise back in 2006. The new franchise authorized 3,500 bus shelters. That's why you see them all over the place. 3,300 of them or so were replacements for existing shelters. So bus shelters were ubiquitous well before the current design and continue to be. There are a number of those that were installed historically in historic districts as well, about 95, based on our count. And we do anticipate installing about 350 or so more shelters as part of this expansion. Extension. Just a quick visual of what the shelters look like, at least before the 2006 franchise. You can see in the top a fairly, I think, typical 1970s-ish design, maybe? And the current ones that you see out there. Much of the redesign really focused on trying to make significant improvements to the bus shelter design from an environmental, from an aesthetic perspective, really focusing on transparency, reducing the connection points on the ground to make it feel lighter, providing a white roof to reflect sunlight, make it more comfortable. And for the first time, all shelters have seating as well. So it's truly, truly an amenity for our passengers and those riding the bus. The original franchise had a family of shelters to respond to different sizes and different levels of ridership throughout the city. These were the original five that all sort of vary on sort of width and length. And then more recently, we just got approval from the Design Commission for narrower shelters. One of the things that we found as we were going to expand is that there were sidewalks that we couldn't put bus shelters on because of the way that they were designed and the clearances required to maintain pedestrian circulation. And so these designs really do, I think, an elegant job of keeping with the family and ultimately allowing us to install shelters in those other locations. In terms of sighting and location, as you can see from the map, the shelters are throughout the city. This is truly a program where we want to be able to put a bus shelter at every location that can accommodate one. Ultimately, MTA, not DOT, obviously develops the bus routes where the buses are going to go and cites the stops in coordination with us. And then we at the Agency at DOT approve the sighting and location based on a set of very rigorous sighting criteria that takes into account making sure the shelters are far enough away from a whole plethora of other street furniture, and also that there's enough clear path for people to walk as well. One of the other key aspects of the coordinated design, and something we feel really strongly about as well, is the bus shelters do a job in communicating that this is a bus stop throughout the city, and that being the same design throughout the city is really important. So whether you're in Staten Island, Queens, Bronx, in a historic district or not, you know as you're approaching that, hey, this is where I can go get the bus. It works as really an important piece to communicate that to those that are looking to use the system. And bus shelters are really critical for transit, as transit infrastructure. They provide a really important service where, obviously, they're protecting people who are waiting for the bus from rain, from wind, from snow, although we're not getting as much of that these days. They provide a place for a whole range of people to sit, especially those who are older New Yorkers who need to take that time to actually sit and wait for the bus. As we know, buses are a little erratic in when they show up, so it's really important in those instances. Ultimately, shelters help to encourage transit use because you can actually get out there and sit and wait for a bus as opposed to having to stand on your feet and maybe at that point you decide to do something else. They are, again, a citywide installation, so this is something that's really benefiting all New Yorkers, not just those who have access to higher-quality transit services. And it's also, I think, an important piece in sort of the city's overall pride. We have a beautiful city. We have a beautiful bus shelter. These are installed throughout the city. It really helps tourists get around. It helps New Yorkers get around. It's a really important piece of the city's infrastructure, and again, is ultimately installed throughout the city. And we'll just end with a couple of photos. These are some of the shelters that we have in existing historic districts. Again, well-used by a whole range of people. They are at bus stops. They're very transparent. And the other thing that we did want to focus on, we know historic paving is a particular focus for the Commission. The shelter is designed so that any historic paving that is disturbed is easily restored, easily put back. We've done that mostly outside of historic districts where there's distinctive paving, thankfully, but it is something that's sort of built into the design and something the operator and DOT takes very seriously. And with that, I will turn it back over to Leanne to go over the rest. Thank you.
So as you just heard from DOT, the transit routes and the bus stops are determined by the MTA. Locations for bus shelters are identified by DOT based on a number of criteria. And LPC does not have any discretion with respect to the location of the bus stop or the design or location of the shelter. There are approximately 100 bus shelters installed within designated historic districts throughout the city. Historic paving, currently the franchise agreement discussed by DOT, and that agreement requires sensitivity to installation within historic paving, so that is already kind of happening. LPC does not review applications for bus shelter installations regardless of whether there's historic paving or not currently. Per the franchise agreement, if they do install a bus shelter within historic paving, that paving has to be restored and replaced in kind. We're sure you're all very familiar with the aesthetic of bus shelters and how they appear in the streetscape, but here are a few more examples of existing bus shelters that are located within historic districts. And as you can see, they're very open, transparent. They recede into the streetscape and have minimal attachments through the sidewalk. So LPC is proposing to continue a similar approach to our existing approach, which is to not really review the locations of bus shelters. If a shelter conforms to the previously approved PDC design, and it's at an official bus stop, so we propose not requiring a permit in that circumstance. This would apply for both the current shelter design and for future approved shelter designs. LPC would, however, require a permit if a bus shelter were proposed to go in an area with historic paving in order to document the existing conditions and ensure that a minimal amount of damage and disruption is caused to that paving. And in the event that a bus shelter is deemed unnecessary in the future or a stop is moved, the proposed rules would require full in-kind replacement of historic paving material matching the pre-installation conditions. So again, this approach is similar to how we regulate public pay telephones, link kiosks, now the sidewalk and roadway cafes, as adopted at our last hearing. And we think this approach makes sense for such an important piece of transportation infrastructure. And because, again, the bus stops are set by MTA and the design of the bus shelters has been approved by the PDC. Also, the design of the bus shelters is highly transparent, minimal in design and unobtrusive, and therefore has no significant impact on and will not detract from significant architectural features of the buildings or the streetscapes. A final word about process. The rulemaking process was initiated when you voted to calendar the proposed rules back in April. The proposed rules were then published in the city record and posted online, and today we'll hear public testimony. After today's public hearing, staff will review your comments and the comments made by the public and may propose modifications to address specific issues or concerns. And then the proposed final rules, as adjusted, will be presented at a subsequent public meeting for your consideration and for your vote. Thank you, and we're both available to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you very much. Do we have any questions at this time? All right, not seeing any questions. I'm going to move right to the testimony. And we have some people who've signed up to speak in person, and I think some people who maybe have signed up to speak remotely. I want to remind everybody, you have three minutes to speak, and we'll go to testimony right now. So we're going to start with Matthew Bauer.
What? Mission? Matt Bauer, I'm the President of the Madison Avenue Business Improvement District, which largely lies within the Upper East Side Historic District. Many of you here, and, you know, actually on Friday, we're going to be leading a tour from our office called Madison Avenue High Fashion Historic Preservation, that actually talks about the connection between the success of our neighborhood and historic preservation. So as you know, since 2019, we've been coming to the LPC and asking, with Community Board Aid, and asking for a hearing on the proposed slender bus shelters proposed on Madison Avenue with video billboards, because we genuinely feel that those signage that's on both sides of the shelter with video signs that are eight feet tall do not in keeping with the character and the rules of the historic district. We've been told that the Commission was going to look at it, but just when we understand that they're going to be installed, just last month, the choice was made to create a new set of rules so that you wouldn't have to review the future of bus shelters in our district. So I just want to pause for a second. I don't have much time, but how's it looking towards the democratic institution that we're not going to review specific installations within our historic district? And, you know, I'll tell you how that feels for our merchants because I'm just going to hold something I should work with the number of you here, the District Master Plan for Madison Avenue, and it specifically says that illuminated signage is not allowed. Because if you go for a hearing, you couldn't do it, but we're here. So that's specifically said there. And just in last spring, you guys put together rulemaking for signage, video signage in stores, and it has to be 18 inches back from the window if there is a video sign. So what was the public purpose of those regulations if it weren't for the keeping and feeling about video signage in historic districts? So, you know, I just ask that you take this opportunity not to change the rules and to hold the hearing specifically on the slender bus shelters that are proposed for Madison Avenue in our historic district, looking specifically at the video signage eight feet tall that is on both sides of the structures. So thank you so much for your consideration. Have a good day.
All right, next we have Gail Barron.
Good morning. My name is Gail Barron, and I am a board member of Community Board Aid. In September 2019, CBA sent a letter to DOT and the Landmarks Preservation Commission opposing bus shelters in the Upper East Side Historic District. CBA continues to oppose the installation of shelters between 57th and 78th Street on Madison and strongly recommends that the proposed amendment to LPC's rules, which would exempt bus shelters from LPC approval, not be adopted. Installation of these structures will undermine pedestrian scale and architectural merit of Madison Avenue, which has been legislated and enforced by the city through both landmark and zoning provisions. The LPC is charged with evaluating sidewalk use, including the appropriateness of cafes and newsstands. We strongly urge that the proposed bus shelters be evaluated by the LPC as part of it. These shelters with digital advertising screens, seven feet, six inches in height, facing north and south, will disrupt the unique qualities of Madison Avenue. Bus shelters do not belong in the Upper East Side Historic District in Madison. Madison Avenue is a metropolitan district. In its location, in these three historic districts, and in its designation as Special Madison Avenue Preservation District, LPC's district plan, restored from its own Madison Avenue, was created to protect retail and specifically prohibit its businesses from installing internally illegal appliances, lamps, lenses, flashing lights, and moving signs. While stores on Main Street must adhere to these rules, protected by historic and architectural integrity, facing the public to install everything, ink, print, and moving billboards. This digital signage complex of nature, the historic district, will divert attention from the ground floor of typical 20-foot-long storefronts, focusing instead on moving images more than likely of people in stores inside restaurants. The structures are narrow, but they still remain out of scale in Madison Avenue's narrow side. If installed, they'll be seven feet of the storefronts, and they will disrupt the pedestrian pathway, potential safety issues on the area. Should shelters with three-dimensional illuminated large-scale advertising outlets be...
Ma'am, if the three minutes are up, so could you please wrap up?
Thank you. Jeremy Woodoff?
Morning Commissioners, I'm Jeremy Woodoff, speaking for the Victorian Society of New York. This proposed bus shelter rule is different from other Commission rules. It is deregulation masquerading as rulemaking. Instead of protecting historic districts, it would effectively eliminate the Commission's jurisdiction over bus shelters in those districts. One of the essential functions of the Landmarks Commission is to protect the public spaces of our historic districts. These spaces act as the matrix that holds districts together. They are the foreground through which the buildings are seen. When care is taken with the designs and materials in these spaces, the historic character of the district is supported and enhanced. The rule is written in such a way that no matter what bus shelter design may be approved in the future by the Public Design Commission, LPC will have no role in determining the appropriateness of that design. The shelters may become taller, more opaque, covered with advertising, or incorporate 5G antennas. No matter how inappropriate the design is, this rule will forfeit the Commission's ability to review it. This seems to us a gross abdication of LPC's mandated responsibility. Further, a revision to the city charter in 1995 removed the Public Design Commission's jurisdiction over designated landmarks and... jurisdiction over designated landmarks and Historic Districts. The only exceptions are works of art and some alterations within scenic landmarks. The Design Commission has no jurisdiction to approve a design within an Historic District. A citywide design approval does not apply to Historic Districts unless LPC specifically finds it appropriate and approves it. Before approving the proposed rule, the Commissioners should have satisfactory answers to these questions. One, why would LPC voluntarily forfeit its obligation and responsibility to review future designs for bus shelters in Historic Districts, no matter how inappropriate the shelter is designed? Two, why would the LPC delegate this responsibility to the Public Design Commission, an agency with no expertise or interest in Historic Preservation? Three, under what authority can the LPC delegate this responsibility to the Public Design Commission when Section 854 of the New York City Charter has removed that responsibility from PDC and given it to LPC? Four, does this rule imply that the commission intends to remove itself from review of other public realm design features like food kiosks, streetlights, 5G towers, signage in parks, sidewalk and street pavements? These features also receive citywide approval from the Design Commission. And five, does LPC believe that design in the public realm within Historic Districts is important and worthy of its consideration? If so, how does this rule support that belief?
All right, thank you very much. All right, is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak on this item? Yes, please come up to the podium and state your name, and you have three minutes.
Hi, good morning. My name is Alan Sullivan. I am the co-CEO of JCPoet Street Development here in New York. On behalf of JCPoet, we like to chair the Commissioners and the staff of Landmarks Preservation Commission, and all of your government colleagues here in New York, including the Mayor's Office, particularly Deputy Madjiyam Latim, and the Lord of Parks. Most especially, we would like to thank our partners, the Department of Transportation, Commissioner Gregory, first deputy commissioner of the ONG, General Counsel Wondager, and DOT staff, particularly Deputy Commissioner Michelle Craven and Latim, who move in every day. Our team is very proud to install and maintain three and a half thousand worldly bus shelters since we are a part of this. Some further context, JCPoet operates in world-class operations from Paris, London, Scotland. Our operations are structured in a successive way. Basically, powered by a white block network, so it's simple to add. This program has been providing invaluable services to New York across all parts of the city. We're proud to welcome the city and its officials to recognize the need to provide this important service to the bus riders who live and work in a variety of communities, communities of all New York. We're committed to continuing installation of the award-winning Greenshaw Design Bus Shelter with special care and attention that we employ when installing shelters in new locations in Historic Districts, and particularly those with historic name. We are honored to expand services to the people of the city, which we hope will further the aims of this commission to promote the use of Historic Districts, Landmarks, material Landmarks, and scenic Landmarks for their education, pleasure, and pride.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? All right, not noting that there's no one else in the room to speak, I will turn it back to Gregory to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you Chair Carol. We have a number of remote participants, so the first one we'll be hearing from is, Jesse K., let me see if Jesse K. Jesse K. from Councilmember Keith Powers's office. Jesse K., I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Yes, hi, my name is Jesse K. I'll be testifying on behalf of Councilmember Keith Powers this morning. Thank you for giving me the time to speak. I'm here to ask that LPC reconsider their amendment to Section 2-23 of their rules, which would provide that no LPC approval is required for the installation of a bus shelter if it has received the approval of the Public Design Commission. If approved, I believe this amendment would have negative ramifications for the Upper East Side Historic District. Bus shelters with video advertising, as Matt Bauer mentioned, are slated to be installed along Madison Avenue within the coming weeks. For nearly five years, the LPC has been asked to hold a hearing on these bus shelters, which will be located within the Upper East Side Historic District. If other types of street furniture, such as 5G towers and link NYC kiosks, have to obtain LPC approval prior to installation, it would follow that bus shelters should receive the same treatment, especially if they are to have video advertising. As the agency responsible for protecting the historical and architectural integrity of the city, we hope the LPC will understand the need for street furniture to go through the proper approval process. Furthermore, according to LPC's own guidelines, retailers within Historic Districts may not display illuminated signage or LED screens unless they are recessed by at least eighteen inches from the window. However, the proposed bus shelters have video advertising displays which are not only out of context within the Historic District, but which also contradict LPC's own rules regarding illuminated signage. I hope the Landmarks Preservation Commission will reconsider the adoption of the proposed amendment to Section 2-23 of their rules and will be amenable to a hearing on the Madison Avenue bus shelters. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we will be hearing from Zainab Turan, from the Friends of the Upper East Side. Zainab Turan, I am promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good morning Chair Carol, Commissioners. My name is Zainab Turan, speaking on behalf of the Friends of the Upper East Side Historic Districts. We appreciate the opportunity. We understand that the hearing today is not concerned with deciding the appropriateness of bus shelters in Historic Districts, but to decide whether the Landmarks Preservation Commission should amend its rules to remove itself, in most cases, from being involved in the regulatory process. We are unclear about what has prompted the LPC to propose this rules amendment at this time. We argue that this amendment could potentially be detrimental to the proper preservation of the character of the Upper East Side Historic Districts. We believe it will also weaken the LPC's role in regulating modifications that have a significant impact on areas under their jurisdiction. Additionally, the proposed amendments would further erode opportunities for public review. We are especially concerned about how the absence of LPC review of bus shelters would affect the special character of the, of Madison Avenue. Bus shelters cited here would be out of scale with the street's historic architecture and would block views of storefronts which are defining feature of the avenue. In particular, we urge LPC to review the tall digital advertising screens with video displays that are included in the bus shelter design. Digital advertising screens would be visually intrusive and unfair to Madison Avenue retailers who have to abide by the rules of the Madison Avenue storefronts' master plan, and set back their own video displays at least eighteen inches from storefront glazing. Bus shelter screens, by contrast, are directly in pedestrians' line of sight and would be insistent and unavoidable on Madison Avenue's narrow sidewalks. We therefore urge, strongly urge, the LPC to remain engaged in a process that could have a significant impact on the character of the Historic Districts. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we have Casimir Sedanius. He has signed up. Casimir Sedanius, if you would like to speak on this item and are available, could you please click the raise hand button now so I know that you're with us? Okay. So I will be promoting you to panelist right now. And once you are panelist, please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, it's Casimir Sedanius, Principal of Greenshaw Architects, Head of Industrial Design. I'm in favor of the proposal to permit the installation of bus shelters in areas under the Landmark Preservation Committee's jurisdiction. You know, the New York bus shelters were purposely designed for the city's diverse sidewalks, accommodating various widths and slopes across the boroughs while ensuring a consistent identity and familiarity. Their design is deliberate for New York's streets, for the users that surrounds, not for show and not intended to seek attention by being different in every precinct. Rather than, the designs allow the cities to flow through them with minimal structure on the sidewalk and to allow maximum visibility through the bus shelter. Long gone is the unnecessary robustness of such street infrastructure, which we always have to contend to with in New York. Like the previous four-posted, low, dark, undercrofted bus shelters of decades past, blocked views, were poorly lit, and did not convey security. All members of the New York City Bus Shelter family share attributes that do not fundamentally change. They adapt to a sidewalk width and comply with all required agency sidewalk clearances. The monolithic clean and generous height of the New York City Bus Shelter doesn't change. It's got a clear glass span at the back, it's not gonna be covered in advertising, maximizes the transparency to the sidewalk ahead, the pavement, and allows visibility to the building beyond or to a retail storefront. Opting rather for a design approach where simplicity blends into any precinct, not overly modern or garish, not antiquated. The intervention on the sidewalk in any district of the city enables a condition where visitors and users cannot tell whether they are newly installed or decades old, yet always familiar as part of the citywide necessary bus service. Engineered with minimal footprint in mind, as shelters features structures that only touch the ground in two points so that any paving pattern, historic or other, can continue through the bus shelter uninhibited. Some street utilities are not afforded this type of maintenance that these bus shelter system receives. These are routinely maintained, uphold the perception of a high standard, designed for the people, as well as conveying the familiarity and perception of safety that comes with a consistent design and a line-wide identity. Again, I'm in favor of these bus shelters in jurisdictions under the LPC Committee's jurisdiction, that is prioritizing city needs with user-centric functionality over flair or design statements, ensuring equal accessibility and adaptability across all boroughs without prejudice. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. And next up, we will be hearing from Megan Fitzpatrick from Landmark West. Megan Fitzpatrick, I am promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hello Commissioners, Megan Fitzpatrick, speaking on behalf of Landmark West. Our committee, while acknowledging the importance of bus shelters, strongly objects to the LPC's consistent relinquishment of jurisdiction, guidance, and responsibility over street infrastructure installations. Under the proposed rules, bus shelter designs are overseen by the Public Design Commission with specifications regarding location and operation overseen by the Department of Transportation and the MTA. All of these city agencies have responsibilities and statutory mandates that are significantly different from those of the LPC. In adopting this rule, the LPC removes itself from this important process, meaning that the agency's background and expertise will be absent from the analysis of these proposed structures. Thus, the context of construction of bus shelters' impact on Historic Districts and separately designated landmarks will not be considered. The comprehensive regulation of these issues from a landmark preservation perspective is very important. The LPC is responsible for guiding sensitive design for Historic Districts. It's perhaps not enough to have a uniform design for the whole city. It would be interesting if thought were put into designing street furniture that clearly expresses that you are in a distinct part of the city, such as a Historic District. We believe that this is a, that it is vital that the LPC remain jurisdiction over elements within Historic Districts. These incremental forfeitures of jurisdiction, whether they relate to link NYC towers, sidewalk and roadway cafes, newsstands, benches, and street lamps, all add up. And we believe this puts our Historic Districts' individual landmarks and scenic landmarks at risk. The committee would ask the LPC to rethink its position and reassert its jurisdiction over these structures. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we will be hearing from Larry Giannakini from the Public Art Fund. Larry Giannakini, I am promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good morning. I am Larry Giannakini, Deputy Director for Programming and Operations at Public Art Fund. It's my pleasure to present testimony this morning in support of the proposal to initiate rulemaking which will enable more bus shelters to be installed on city streets. As the leader in our field, Public Art Fund brings dynamic contemporary art to a broad audience in New York City and beyond. Because we are a nonprofit organization, we rely on visionary partners like JCPoet to mount ambitious free exhibitions of international scope and impact. These exhibitions offer New Yorkers and visitors to the city powerful experiences with art in the urban environment, surprising and delighting them while providing inspiration and relevance to their daily lives. Since 2017, with our groundbreaking exhibition, Ai Wei Wei: Good Fences Make Good Neighbors, JCPoet has been an incredible partner for Public Art at us, showcasing the work of seventy-five artists from over thirty countries across the globe, including five solo artist exhibitions and two large-scale group artist exhibitions. Their in-kind donation of advertising space on bus shelters across New York makes it possible for us to bring cutting-edge artworks and a diverse range of artist voices to often underserved neighborhoods, and has garnered over two billion impressions to date. New York City is known for its culture and thriving arts community. JCPoet partners with Public Art Fund to eliminate barriers so that everyone can access amazing art. Together, we are able to offer the public experiences with art that are integrated into the fabric of our city. While waiting for the bus, walking around the city, and going about daily life, New Yorkers' lives are enriched by these artworks, and JCPoet has a tremendous supporter, offering us hundreds of spaces two times a year to bring exhibitions to all corners of the city. The partnership has grown beyond New York with its popularity here, allowing us to offer similar programming in Boston, Chicago, and in international cities like Abidjan, Ivory Coast, Mexico City, Mexico. Art inspires us all, and we know that representation matters particularly when it comes to engaging young people. The artists we presented with JCPoet include immigrants, artists of color, trans and queer artists, emerging artists, women artists, and artists of all ages and stages in their careers. When people walk through the city, they see themselves reflected in these works and tell us how much art brings them inspiration, restoring their energy, and igniting their creativity. "It's the fuel to our fire," said one young New Yorker when we asked about the power of these public works. JCPoet has worked closely with us to realize artists' dreams and bring these important voices to the forefront. We know that these opportunities must continue in order to nurture New Yorkers, young artists, and to foster an ongoing appreciation for the arts. JCPoet is a champion of public art and a critical partner in building our civic pride and artistic community. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we will be hearing from Lucy Levine from the Historic Districts Council. Lucy Levine, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi Commissioners, my name is Lucy Levine, I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic Districts Council. HGC seeks clarification on how this rule deals with historic paving. Will LPC require the applicant to salvage and store any historic paving removed when installing a bus shelter on historic paving? If so, we support this provision. If not, we ask that LPC require any applicant installing a bus shelter on historic paving to salvage and store that historic paving material, and we ask that this be made explicitly clear in the language of the rule. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we will be hearing from Andrea Goldwin from the New York Landmarks Conservancy. Andrea Goldwin, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Good day Chair Carol and Commissioners, I'm Andrea Goldwin, speaking on behalf of the New York Landmarks Conservancy. As a preservation group, the Conservancy doesn't have a formal position on bus shelters, but as people who take the bus, we think they're a good idea. We support the amendment that calls for LPC to review installations on historic pavings. The concern lies in whether a generic bus shelter design featuring illuminated signage, which the Public Design Commission has approved, is appropriate for New York's unique Historic Districts. We think that it is not. There does not need to be a bespoke shelter for every block and every district, but there should be some sensitivity to the special character of these historic resources. The LPC has extensive regulations and rules for signage on buildings, and illuminated signs in particular. It seems inconsistent that bus shelters on the sidewalks of Historic and illuminated signs in particular. It seems inconsistent that bus shelters on the sidewalks of historic districts should be exempt from those rules. Thank you for the opportunity to express the Conservancy's views.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I do not see any further hand raised in the attendees list. Actually, I do. So we have one hand raised, that being Betsy Plum. Betsy Plum, I am promoting you to panelist right now. So please unmute your line and state your name for the record.
Good morning. My name is Betsy Plum. I am Executive Director of the Riders Alliance, New York's grassroots organization of bus and subway riders. Good morning again. Thank you for the opportunity to join you today and offer testimony in favor of the proposed rule change related to the installation of bus shelters. Today, I am here speaking on behalf of New York's more than two million daily bus riders in defense of bus shelters and their ultimate location and installation not being held hostage by extensive review. We applaud and support this rule change, and as someone who regularly rides the B-57 and uses stops in a historic district, I am personally, excuse me, personally in support as well. Bus shelters are a very basic infrastructure amenity that makes a tremendous difference in protecting riders from rain, snow, sun, and wind. While our city already boasts an impressive network of shelters, more are always necessary as covered seating is still only available at a select portion of bus stops citywide. Denying bus riders' protection from the elements, particularly as weather patterns grow more severe with climate change, is inhospitable at best and unconscionable at worst. As the LPC considers this rule change, it is my hope to impress that the presence of bus shelters and their advertising does not run counter to the goals of preservation. Indeed, bus shelters, as we have in New York City, have been expertly designed and exhaustively vetted to match the needs of our many diverse communities, especially landmarked neighborhoods. For example, a new award-winning design that we saw earlier allows shelters to be brought to narrower sidewalks, a factor in many historic districts. With this, our historic districts are made more accessible, they are made more inclusive, they are made more livable, all while preserving their distinctive and critical characteristics. That is a win-win. We similarly support this rule change because whether they are landmarked or not, our sidewalks belong to all New Yorkers, and bus riders deserve a place to sit while waiting for their service. Bus riders are overwhelmingly low-income people of color. A majority are women and immigrants to this country. Fairness dictates that there should be no additional layers of review imposed simply because of the location of some bus shelters, considering that there are already so many other layers of review and oversight for bus shelters. Ultimately, it merits being noted that those pushing an agenda to create even more bureaucracy for shelters and to block their installation are saying far more about their opinions towardward bus riders than the shelters themselves or true concern for the goals of preservation. Given the dependence of every neighborhood economy on service sector workers and on bus riders, providing appropriate accommodations for commuters is essential to maintaining a vibrant community. And that is absolutely what we want for every community, especially our historic ones, to be vibrant. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we'll be hearing from Lo Vanderwijk from Carnegie Hill Neighbors. Lo Vanderwijk, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I hit the wrong button and I got lost. I apologize. My name is Lo Vanderwijk. I represent Carnegie Hill Neighbors. We, many of our residents are bus riders. We are in support of shelters, basically. But we do not think the LPC should relinquish its authority or its powers to to have a say-so in the design. And we are, of course, concerned about the illumination issue for historic districts. Landmarks does control or regulate illumination for storefronts with the so-called eighteen-inch rule. It's logical that these large seven-foot, perhaps taller, panels that will be lit should also be regulated. At least it should come before the landmarks in terms of a discussion, not of jurisdiction, but a discussion of of design and alternatives to minimize the illumination impact. And so we hope that the Landmarks Commission will not relinquish its influence in this area. And it doesn't mean that there has to be overregulation, but certainly one or two hearings, and we would actually benefit from the Commissioners' individual views on how best to approach this problem. So thank you very much for this opportunity, and we hope, we hope that the Landmarks Commission will be able to assert some of its authority, which is of great benefit to the city. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we'll be hearing from Jim Burke. Jim Burke, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. And once you are panelists, please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Sure. My name is Jim Burke. I'm a member of Riders Alliance, but I'm a bus rider, and so is my mom, who is in her eighties. To get around this city without any place to sit is really unconscionable and inhumane, and anything that's going to limit that or slow that down, like some of the other speakers have talked about, they're not for bus riders. And one of the ways you can see this city, especially if you're older or you're handicapped, is by using the bus. And so, and these buses, they're basically invisible. They're mostly glass. And so they're not going to detract from the neighborhoods. And we cannot stand in the way of letting bus shelters offer a dignified space for someone to wait in the rain or just because they cannot stand for long periods of time. In this city, we have very, very few bus shelters. There are thousands of stops that have no bus shelters. Anything, again, that limits them adds another layer to them is really unconscionable. So I really urge you guys to go ahead with your current plan so that we can have as many bus shelters as we can throughout the city. And I really hope you take that to heart and think about the people, think about your own parents, think about yourselves when you're older, when you need a place just to sit while you wait for the bus. And that really should trump any other concern. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I do not see any further hands raised in the attendees list. If you would like to speak on this item, please click the raise hand button now. Okay, no further hands are raised. So I will note for the record that we also received testimony from Manhattan Community Board Five, recommending denial, urging the LPC to allow the public the opportunity to be informed and participate in the preservation process. And with that, I'll bring it back to you Chair Carol.
All right. Thank you very much. And I want to thank everybody who participated today in testifying on these proposed rules. We will close the rules later this afternoon, close the hearing, sorry, later this afternoon, and we will bring this back for a vote in the near future. So thank you all, and we will now move to our applications for work on designated properties.
Okay, and I will just note a schedule change. We will not be reviewing the two scheduled public meeting items. At this time, we may bring at least one of them back later this afternoon to look at, and instead we'll be moving directly to public hearing item number two. That's LPC twenty-four dash zero seven four three zero. An application for certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Brooklyn, Block eleven fifty-one, Lot eighty-one, One Seventy-three Prospect Place and the Prospect Heights Historic District. This is an Italianate-style rowhouse built in eighteen seventy-one, and the application is to construct a rear yard addition. We'll pause for just a moment as we bring the applicants into the room.
As the team assembles here, I just want to note that Maggie, who is our staff preservationist on this project, has been with the commission since twenty seventeen, is going to be leaving us shortly to go work for Howard Zimmerman, and I think it's a wonderful opportunity for you. Congratulations, but we will miss you very much. Maggie has handled many complicated projects, including being the special desk for our DDC projects. And not only that, in addition to not only handling applications, but in addition to that work, she has helped us immensely with interpretation and translation services, particularly in certain communities and in putting together certain brochures. And we really will miss your expertise and your hard work. Thank you very much.
Sure. I project, so I don't think you have to worry. Good morning, everybody. My name is Dan Kaplan from Bauer Bird Architects in Gowanus, Brooklyn. I grew up in Park Slope in the landmark districts, and I've presented to you all several times over the years. We do a lot of landmarks projects in the different historic districts, mostly in Brooklyn. Today, I bring to you One Seventy-three Prospect Place in Prospect Heights. I came here in twenty fifteen for a two-story rear addition at Two Oh Three Prospect Place right down the block and was approved for that, which gave us confidence in this round with One Seventy-three, that doing another two-story addition, following all the landmarked rules, we thought we were well within reason for this. We presented to the community board last Wednesday, and we were approved with no no votes. There were some abstentions, but I don't know if that was on your record yet. Okay, good. They didn't yesterday, so we didn't know if you have heard. Today, I present a two-story rear addition which you can see here that is an addition upon an existing addition. What we're doing here is there is an existing rear addition. This is the Donut Hall, and you could see this is the side of our street. There are many different story additions all along our side of the street. It's also an extremely deep lot with a hundred thirty-one-foot lots facing each other. So all of these additions that have been approved still remain with very large rear yards. Our addition exists over, and I'll show you in a moment, the exact footprint of a rear addition that's two stories already that we plan to tear down other than the property line side so as not to disturb our neighbor who's in attendance today and supportive of us. You can see here that a lot of work has been done over the years, none of it with landmarks approval, and it's become a giant hodgepodge of poor decisions. Where you can see here that there's a two-story rear addition with this giant green deck. And then it only spans about two-thirds of the property currently. So you can't really renovate something like this due to zoning rules and make any real changes because of the narrow side yard. And so this proposal plans to tear this down and build a full-width extension while keeping in mind the depth that the existing extension currently is. We plan to go no further. Our neighbor right here has an extension who's slightly deeper on the second floor of it and a few feet deeper on the floor below. You can see here the existing rear addition doesn't match brick, even though it is very old. We found it on very old sandborne maps, but we don't believe it to be original to the house. You could see here, looking down the street, that there are many different rear additions. This is our neighbor right here, which gives you a very good picture of how deep we plan to go, because we will go no deeper, and we will actually not even go as tall as our current addition is. These are renderings stitched into an existing photo of the rear facade of Prospect Place. Our proposed addition was designed around several concepts. Our client Tara is a writer, and her partner is an artist who also works from home. They invite writers and artists to stay with them, and so there's often many different writers and artists in the house. Their rear facade faces north, which, as I'm sure you've heard many times in arguments, gets very little light. So the main thrust of our design is to get as much light as possible into the depths of these houses, which by the time you get towards the middle are quite dark. You can see by the nature of our sloped roof that what we've done is not just an aesthetic preference, but it actually makes an argument for zoning rule, which is this is a second-floor mezzanine on the parlor floor, really. This will be the studio for Tara's partner. In order to make that compliant with habitable room rules of no part of a room being deeper than thirty feet from a window that opens to the exterior, our design came about by sloping the roof, having operable skylights that provide the light and air for that floor. In the end, we ended up loving the design of it. Often, we think the best designs are born out of parameters like New York zoning rules. Our plan is to make a two-story extension with a roof terrace, and that area above the kitchen and dining room will be double-story, and then the studio will open upon it. Our clients love plants. Their backyard is beautiful, as are the rear yards on this block. So what we've tried to do is bring in as much light as possible, and we plan to plant a lot of plants within the space and sort of connect the interior to the exterior. So one of our main inspirations for this were steel and glass conservatories from the turn of the twentieth century. I've actually worked on a couple of houses in Park Slope that have these. I just can't show photos of them for privacy reasons, but it's actually not that uncommon for the region. And so we even picked the color green that matches those conservatories. And so we wanted to give this feeling that if they're going to be in the house much of the day throughout the year, that they get enough light and feel connected to the outside space, both by planting inside and that feeling kind of like a greenhouse of the inside melding with the exterior. We're going to use salvaged bricks to match the rear facade. We're going to have a copper, single-seam roof with copper downspouts integrated into the facade. And then a brick patio outside. This is the rear extension. We've provided the different colors and materials pointing to the different parts of the rear elevation that we propose. This is a section through it demonstrating how this is the room that we're trying to get the light and air back to. This rear addition will have no visibility from any public way. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions? All right, not seeing any questions. We'll move to public testimony. We'll come back to you after that. And I have three people who signed up in person, so we have Lynn Bernstein.
Thank you. I am the next-door neighbor of Tara. I live at 175 Prospect Place. And one thing I can say is I'm almost jealous of her conservatory. We cannot grow plants in our house. I have all artificial flowers. I can't keep, can't grow anything with plastic. It's too dark. So that's great. That's all P for doing that. And I think I'm in full support of the extension. We have always enjoyed the wall that's on that side. It's given our side of the garden privacy. We kind of lost it, and we built our own extension out to that extent. I have a little veranda on the second floor, and I think as much as I love seeing Tara on the deck and knowing when she's coming and going away, it would be kind of nice to have that little slice of privacy back again so you can have each other's space. I just, I think it's great. I have no objections. I haven't given questions. I'm excited about it.
Great, thank you. Larissa, and I'm sorry, I can't. Okay.
Yeah, we are a little bit down the block. We can actually see the existing extension. We're at 159, my husband and I. And yeah, I feel the same way as Lynn does. We have an extension. We, on either side of our backyard, there's an extension, a pretty deep extension on one side and none on the other. And honestly, we prefer the side with the extension because of privacy. You know, when we're sitting on our deck, it's a beautiful old wall, and you feel you have a corner to sit in that is private, whereas on the other side, you kind of feel like you're on the same, you're sharing the deck with the neighbor, which is fine, but we prefer the extension. Also, I've spent many hours looking at this design, and I think it's very beautiful. And I'm excited for our block to have something of this architectural magnificence on it.
Great, thank you very much. And then Philip Gorbich?
I also lived there. We've lived there 28-something years. The blocks changed a lot over that time. It also got landmarked during that period. So people did make changes to the backyards and extensions and elevating, adding a little half-floor on the back in ways that were quite tacky along the way. But most of them have been done tastefully, especially the ones that are low. And this is like by far the way the most tasteful and the most interesting, and the most kind of brings out what's most in character about the block. I share with the listeners, you know, the extensions. We had one of our neighbors didn't, but the idea that you're staggered in the back, and that people, it seems in fact to be an advantage in every way for the whole experience in these huge backyards that we all collectively do. It raises a lot of privacy. You really can't see from the backs of the houses on the next street. We don't see much about these at all in the six, seven months of foliage. And the other thing I want to say is I also write and I work at home entirely. I have the back top room, and it's three windows across, and it's dark. It's very dark. Even during bright summer days, the sunlight stops short of coming into windows at that angle. And it's frustrating, because it'll be a beautiful day. I'll walk downstairs, I'll see the rest of the house, look at the light. You can maybe step outside, and it's gorgeous. And in there, it looks great. So the idea of being able to open up that space, it seems to me that it just includes the block as well as perhaps.
Great, thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Oh, noting, is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Okay, noting that there isn't, I will turn it over to Gregory to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. If you'd like to speak on this item, please click the raise hand button now. Okay, I do not see any further hands raised for this item. So I will note that Brooklyn Community Board 8 recommends denial, citing issues ranging from the type, shape, and structure of the wall and window openings, as well as why the architect stated that it would pose too much difficulty to restore the rear facade to a three-punch window. We also received a letter from the Prospect Heights Neighborhood Development Council that was shared earlier. And with that, I'll bring it back to you, Chair Carroll.
Okay. So I think, is this the one where the Landmarks Committee approved it, and then the full board had questions, and because they didn't have the answers, they denied it?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, so we received a letter this morning noting that the Landmarks Committee supported and approved your project, but when it went to the full board, the full board had questions. The Landmarks Committee or subcommittee could not respond to those questions, and so without that clarification, they felt they had to withhold their support. That's the one. Gregory, come up to the mic.
I've done many community board meetings, and we had unanimous yes votes from everyone on the committee except abstentions. So I'm very confused how. There was two votes. The first vote was by the subcommittee, and then they were voted down. And then after that, there was a second vote where everyone voted yes who voted. So I have no idea why you would get that.
All right. And Gregory, I am thinking of the one that came in this morning, right? It is that one where we got the letter saying they had to withhold their support.
This, it came in late yesterday, but yes, it came in a little bit late. And as they did mention in their resolution that the committee did recommend approval, however, because of these outstanding questions, they couldn't recommend approval for the full board.
All right.
They didn't specify.
I think there were questions about the need and the restoration of the brick.
Okay. Yeah, as well as the window style, the type, shape, structure of the wall and window openings, and those were the primary concerns.
Okay. All right, but interesting that the committee approved it, and I think we can note that, and otherwise support. Are there any last comments you'd like to make before we move to our discussion?
The only last comment I would make is that there was only one person who voiced any resistance of any kind and actually voted for. They put forward one vote that was for the whole thing, and then a couple reservations that we said we'd already worked with staff level about. And then nobody else asked about that. And then they put forward a vote to everybody who was part of the community board, and there was no opposition, including the people who were asking me the questions. They still voted yes. So I'm just very confused about that. Other than that, I would love to answer any questions that you might have, but.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any final questions? All right, not seeing any, I think. Can't close the hearing. So we'll just have a, just so, just to explain to you, we are required to have six commissioners present in person, and we have six commissioners today, but one is remote. And then we have some commissioners who are not here this morning. So we won't be able to vote, but we will have a discussion, and we'll bring it back shortly thereafter. All right, so we will begin our discussion on this rear yard addition. It's two stories, no deeper than the existing, and slightly less deep than the neighbor's addition. And these are unusually deep yards on both sides of the block. So I think that that is something that can be considered as well. And we're also looking at the combination of windows at the third, second floor that provide access to the roof of the rooftop addition. We'll begin. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you like to start this one?
This seems reasonable to me. I don't, I think it's appropriate, and I can vote for it.
Okay.
And I really don't have anything else to say.
Vice Chair Bland?
I find it refreshing in two ways. It's not the standard approach that we see every Tuesday, almost, with a brownstone extension. It's a new idea. I think it's an interesting idea. If it's challenging in any way, it's not seen by the public. I think it might become perhaps, you know, a model, as was suggested by the architect. Refreshing because testimony from two neighbors came. We don't usually hear neighbors come and applaud what's being proposed. We usually hear the reverse. So that's refreshing as well, to know that the neighbors are in support of this. I'm not sure the neighbors in the apartment building on the right were here. I didn't, I don't think they were. And that big gray wall looks a little menacing to me if I were in that building. So I might think that we should, working with staff, and perhaps do something on that big gray, I guess stucco wall to make it a little less intimidating. I don't know what that would mean, maybe brick. We can approve it. I'm still thinking it looks pretty menacing. And I do think that the details need to be worked out with staff. I'm not sure that the details were fully explained in this interesting new approach. So those are my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
The extension is similar to the neighbors next to it. The material, salvaged brick, makes a lot of sense. And what's very interesting, this is one of those projects that is the volume that was cut, cutting the volume, which is an architectural approach. And it really does make it distinctive and different and bring in some, might bring in some beautiful light. So I can approve this.
Thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
You know, it is somewhat unusual design, but, you know, I think it actually, in some ways, is helpful in terms of its neighbors, as the neighbors reflect it. And I think that the, as far as the finestration, that's typical of things that, you know, we have permitted before. And the size and bulk, height and bulk are similar to other additions. So I could certainly support this. And yes, there could be some refinement of detail and a Commissioner Bland suggestion of, you know, maybe doing something on the side as opposed to just the gray, I think could improve it. But those things could be worked out with staff, so I could approve it as presented, but those considerations.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
Thank you. I agree with Fred wholeheartedly. I think it's a fascinating variation on our typical rear yard addition. It has the benefit of improving visibility of the historic building by virtue of the chamfer. I share his concern also about the detailing. I've been looking for a skylight, an operable skylight that has those kind of fine lines that are shown in the rendering. So I think that they should work with staff and give me the spec. If it works out according to the drawing, it's really quite lovely. And I agree also with Fred about the detailing on the sidewall. I think, given the existing conditions photos, I'd be leaning towards suggesting the use of a common brick on that sidewall with some detailing that kind of just make it a little bit less blank and imposing. But that can be done with staff. I think that in general, I would be opposed to the modifications on the third level of the windows, but since they're already kind of divergent, I can't accept it.
Okay, thank you. All right, and we just, Commissioner Chen has just arrived, so I think we may be able to move this item along. So just as maybe a refresher, and I don't know if Abby, if you can just quickly run to the block plan. We can just lay this out. So this is a block, and it's a proposal to replace an existing two-story addition with a new full-width two-story addition. The block is, the addition is not visible from any public way, and there are no significant architectural features that would be removed in order to construct the addition. This block also has a variety of different height additions and very deep blocks. So they're the very deep lots. So each lot is 130 feet deep, as opposed to the more typical 100 feet deep, on both sides of the street. So there's great distance between the backs of these houses and the backs of the houses across the yard. And we have, and the applicant has proposed a design that has this canted roof, sloped roof with skylights, operable skylights in order to achieve light and air as the house faces north. And they both, the artists and writer work at home and would like to have more light and air. And so they're proposing this steel window assembly. And we've heard testimony from the neighbors in support. And then we heard that the Landmarks Committee of the community board approved it. And then the full board reversed that decision because they had some questions that the committee couldn't answer, I think is. But they otherwise have had support for the application. So I don't know if you've heard enough, if you were able to.
Yeah, first, I apologize and rush down as soon as I can finish from the other morning meeting. I'm glad to hear the support and hear the comments from the commissioners. It seems like they're in agreement. I do support the idea of that they work with the staff if there's any concern from any of the commission members.
Okay, all right. So I think we'll make a motion. Well, first, we have to make a motion to close the hearing. Vice Chair Bland, would you make a motion to close the hearing? Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
So second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and now we'll make a motion to support this, and we'll, I think, just add a modification that they continue to work with the staff on the detailing of the sidewall and the window assembly.
With regards to LPC 24-07430173 Prospect Place, Prospect Heights Historic District, an Italianate-style rowhouse built in 1871, application is to construct a rear yard addition. I note the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Prospect Heights Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any specific features, that the proposed rear yard addition will not be visible from any public thoroughfare, that the proposed addition will not rise to the full height of the building, and the top two floors will be preserved, thereby retaining a sense of the building's original scale and massing and maintaining the building's relationship to others in the row, that the proposed addition will not project farther into the rear yard than other additions on the block, and will not substantially eliminate the presence of a rear yard or disrupt the continuity of the central green space, that the house to the east features a commission-approved addition comparable in height and depth to the proposed rear yard addition, that the design and materiality of the rear yard addition features salvaged rear piers, framing, a multi-light two-story window and door assembly, a sloped metal roof and stucco on the sidewall will harmonize with the existing material and character of the buildings and other buildings within the row, that the proposed vertical and horizontal divisions of the windows and the doors and prominent horizontal framing members at the base of the slope will create, will break down the scale of the finestration of the double-height window assembly, and the work will not diminish the special architectural or historic character of the building or Prospect Heights Historic District, and that working with staff, the applicant will refine the details for the building.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Mr. Jefferson?
Aye.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the motion passed.
All right, that's approved. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we're now going to move to the next hearing item. It's public hearing item number three, LPC 23-10177. An application for certificate of appropriateness in Borough of Brooklyn, Block 1102, Lot 4, 431 Seventh Avenue in the Park Slope Historic District Extension. This is currently an empty lot and the application is to construct a new building.
Good morning. My name is Ralph Grotch. I would like to present to you a proposed new building, an empty lot in Park Slope Historic Extension. Like I said, I'm the architect of this building. I represent as a master and architects. And I'd be happy to present. Like I mentioned before, it's in.
We have people participating on Zoom and they can't hear unless you speak directly into the microphone, so.
Yes. Like I said, this is, this building is on the site, is located at the extension of the Park Slope Historic District on the outskirts. And it's directly adjacent to the individual landmark, which is the armory in this location. On the right-hand side, you can see the street scape as currently is. And in the picture below, it shows the location of the future building in red. Few other views of the same location. Two historic photos, as you can see, in 1920s, 1940s, the site has been vacant for a very long time. On the 1800s map, the site was, I assume it was mostly farmland, was empty. And same thing in 1920s, the location of the site, which was never developed, which is where fine in Brooklyn. A large block map showing the location. On the left side, you can see the map view of the site, which is an developed site. On the right-hand side, we're showing the future proposal with rear yard matching the adjacent buildings on both sides, trying to preserve the existing tree. And we've got a landscaped rear yard. And condition, I'd like to point out the variety of styles and designs on the street. We have a near-Greek two-b buildings on the left side. We have Renaissance Revival right directly adjacent to us. And we have a modified Queen Anne on the corner of the building, on the corner of the lot. Here inside, as it is, from across the street and from the yard itself. This is the rear lot. I would like to point out, there's no lateline windows on the wall. So we're not going to be interrupting anyone over the construction. The rear yard, not much historical value, extensive fire escapes, variety of windows. Just additional views of the adjacent buildings next to us from the rear yard. This is the views of, there's no visibility on, along the 15th Street. On the 14th Street is a little glimpse of the building as we're passing by, just a moment as we walk by. This is the current streetscape, again, a massive individual landmark behind. And again, multitude of designs and styles that we were working with. This is a proposed building, as I currently designed. The idea was to fit contextually into the adjacent, to the block. I think we did a pretty good job on achieving that. Streets view. We're proposing a brick facade, modular metal cornice and storefront and terracotta pieces, decorative pieces placed strategically in a couple of locations on the facade. Two additional views of the street from both sides. As you can see, I did align the cornice to match the adjacent buildings. So the view from the street is we do not change the height perspective. In that case, we went with the recommendation from the committee board when we have lightened up the the store, the ground floor. We have opened up the masonry piers all the way down to create a nice solid base for the, for the building. We just want to point out the slide, this is next block over, that windows, there's, there's also a variety of designs and style. It's the next, the next block. And the windows are not necessarily aligned as what I'm proposing on my project. This is the views. One is from the Seventh Avenue. It's a little glimpse of the bulkheads, staircase and elevator. And a little portion of this, which is again, it's a moment as we're passing by along the 14th Street. Two per side view of the, of the project. We pushed back the last floor 15 feet, even though zoning allows us 10 feet to be away from the street. We pushed a little bit further. We did not provide occupancy to the roof, as not to extend the elevated bulkheads to limit that visibility again. It's a building facade, the materiality. Re-elevation. We have a continuous balconies at the rear facade. Aluminum metal railings blocking color to matching the both buildings neighboring to us by escape style. Side views. The cross-section of the building. And these additional views, as you can see, along the Seventh Avenue, the construction above is not visible. I think the building blends very nicely with the block. There's a moment of this, which is barely visible and additional structures required by a building code. So again, along the Seventh Avenue from the other side. It's a, this is the, our bolted projection. As you see, this is where we're creating a nice line along the street. So it doesn't project further than, doesn't beat as a much larger building, which is not. I think it's almost invisible at this point. This is storefront, like I said, the committee board expressed they, the desire to have this storefront matching all the neighboring, just Seventh Avenue corridor, most of the commercial spaces over there in that district. So we're proposed to do a gym. And again, we lighten up as suggested, the sign band. And we carry the brick piers all the way to the ground. Couple of details of the windows. There's a terracotta panels, it's decorative. And the cornice details. This is the rear detail of the balcony. A few floor plans. And thank you. I'd be happy to take questions.
Very much. Commissioners, do we have any questions?
Just, just, just one more addition. It's a proposed brick if anybody would like to see a sample.
Okay, thank you. All right, Vice Chair Bland?
In an earlier, one of your earliest facade shots with an angle, if you could go to that one. It's a question about the cornice. It's like the second and third slide you showed, I think. Sorry to make it, there, there, that one.
This one?
Yeah. The cornice, what are we seeing up there that's bright? Are we, is that glass? Is it, are we seeing through it? Is it a reflection?
Reflection.
Reflection, okay.
It's a rendering, yes.
And it's, okay, and it's, it's, it's reflecting, therefore it's a metal.
It's, it's a metal, yes, that's correct. It's aluminum, which is very typical now.
It's a brown painted aluminum.
It's going to be dark bronze.
And then the spandrels are terracotta?
These spandrel only in this location and this location is a terracotta panels. I did this, you know, to create this verticality into the facade. Inspiration was the bay windows on the left side in the corner building, which creates this nice vertical look into the facade.
Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg?
I have a question or two. On the top floor, you have a room labeled as refuse. What is that?
On the top, should I go to the floor plan?
What?
There is.
The question is, what is the room that is labeled refuse? Right next to the stair.
It's, it's, it's a storage. We can, it's also, there's a trash chute over there in this room. As you can see, we have a trash chute location this way. So it's just continuation of this, being that this one building unit is going to be, it's.
Oh, I, okay, I see. I'd also flag in, although this isn't our jurisdiction, I think your refuse, you, you have some accessibility issues, particularly with the refuse room on the lower floors. But that, I presume you'll work out.
As long as it's automatic doors, we can get away from that.
Okay.
Then you can lower this to three foot six depth.
All right, other questions? All right, I don't see any other questions at this time. So we'll move to public testimony. Would anyone like to speak on this item? Please come to the podium.
Well, good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Jeremy Woodhoff. I'm speaking for the Victorian Society in New York. Founded in New York City in 1966, the Victorian Society in America is dedicated to fostering the appreciation and preservation of our 19th and early 20th century heritage. The New York chapter promotes preservation of our historic districts, individual and scenic landmarks, interiors and civic art. The Victorian Society believes that this proposed new addition to a Victorian period historic district is doing a lot of things right. Both the street and rear facades will align with their neighbors and match the overall height of the adjacent buildings. The penthouse addition will be partially visible from Seventh Avenue and 14th Street, but it's been detailed in a manner so as not to draw attention to itself. The materials, the color palette, the cornice and the punched window openings on the front facade are similar to those of the neighboring buildings, but also speak of the early 21st century. And on a block dominated by the enormous 14th Regiment Armory, there's no danger that this new building will compromise a non-existent rear yard donut. We see that the applicant is proposing three different window sizes on the upper floors of the front facade. This is not typical, as most small apartment buildings in the district have consistent window sizes reflecting uniformity of the apartments within. This variety of window sizes proposed isn't necessarily a problem for the design, but we think greater consistency in use of the terracotta spandrel panels between the windows would help create a more unified and coherent facade. The window glass is noted as being reflective. Reflective glass would not be appropriate. We are more concerned about the ground floor. It looks like a storefront, but the drawings and floor plan don't actually state or account for such a use. I believe I heard that it's to be a gym. And if that's correct, then the following comments may not apply, but they could be useful for the future. If there's any chance it's going to be used as a retail space, now is the right time to give future tenants some guidance. The applicant should amend the proposal and make provision for all of the appurtenances that typically accompany this use. These include lighting and electrical connections, awnings, unobtrusive security hardware and signs. A new building should incorporate these features in its design. This will ensure that they're appropriate for a building, for the building and the historic district and that a future tenant understands these design constraints. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you very much. All right, and I'll note that there is no one else in the hearing room to speak on this item. So I will turn it over to Gregory to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. We have one remote participant with their hand raised, that being Lucy Levine from the Historic District's Council. Lucy Levine, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, commissioners, my name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic District's Council. HTC is happy to support this well-designed, appropriate infill. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. I do not see any further hands raised, so I will note that we received a letter recommending approval from Brooklyn Community Board Six with two conditions, that being to change the facade colors to be more consistent with nearby buildings along Seventh Avenue and either reduce the size or push back the bulkhead from the front building line. And with that, I will bring it back to you, Chair Carroll.
All right, so I'd like to ask if you'd like to respond to some of the comments we've heard.
I think that, like a gentleman said, that we listened to the committee board. We decided to change the use from the recreational to the gym in that space. And we did lighten up the storefront or to make it look like a storefront that is similar to adjacent buildings.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any final questions? All right, then I think we'll go to, move to close the hearing and begin our discussion. Commissioner Chapin, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion on this new building that is going to occupy this vacant lot in the streetscape, which the applicant has shown has a sort of variety of styles. And it's of similar street wall height with a setback top floor and a bulkhead on top. And so we'll begin our discussion. Vice Chair Bland, would you like to start this?
I think this is an excellent proposal. To me, it represents the best of contextual design, meaning it fits in, but it still stands out as a contemporary building. As was stated in Jeremy Woodhoff's excellent testimony, I think as well, that I don't need to repeat. I mean, it matches in many ways the, the, the other buildings on the block, but still does stand out as its own contemporary fact. I did not notice, but he did, that the, that the glass is called to be reflective. It should not be reflective, of course. It can be, it can, it can, forgotten the term already, the glass that is. No, it's, in another word, I'm sorry, I'm just forgetting. I'm too far removed from this as an architect, I guess. The glass, it, it can still be energy efficient, but not reflective. And I think there is more detail required for the storefront. Whatever it's used behind, it still needs a little more detail that can be worked out with staff. But otherwise, a very handsome addition to a lot that's been empty for, as anybody, as long as anybody can remember. I mean, those historic photos go back to the 40s.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
Thank you. Commissioner Bland? And, and I will add that what's interesting about it, I was looking at the vertical disposition of the building and then I looked carefully in the windows, a very tall, which is really nice for that type of building. And I thought that that was an added, added value to this type of building. I think the, the, I didn't quite understand the bulkhead, but I think it depends how partially visible, but that's fine. I can, I can approve this.
Okay. Commissioner Chapin?
I think that the front, the front facade is very well done and fits in really nicely. I, some concern about the back because it is. We look at the back view for a moment here. It seems to. It seems to kind of tower over the rest of the... I guess if, those additional floors, shall we call them, are set back far enough that it doesn't, that it's... I don't remember what the...
Maybe if we go to the view, you can see it from 12th Street, or whatever.
That would be helpful, thank you, yeah.
Yeah. Or the, the view, I think, is how you see it from the street. Yeah, there we go.
Okay. Okay. I just want to have the sense that it, it kind of fits in to the row from the back, you know? I, I understand they're trying to achieve some additional housing space, you know? So I guess if others feel comfortable with that issue, that I can approve it. It certainly is very nicely done from the front, and I'm very comfortable with that, so...
Okay. All right, Commissioner Goldblum?
Thank you. Um, I generally agree that this is an appropriate building. I think it's a rea, a good example of a, of a background building, you know? It's not looking to be loud or, um, particularly assertive. I think it, it does, like Fred said, articulate its, its time period in, in a, in a generally appropriate way. I think, I agree with him in terms of the detail at the storefront. We worked on with staff. Same thing for the cornice. Could be, uh, a little flimsy or thin-looking, and I think that if they work with staff, make sure that it's not too, the, the sheet metal isn't too thin and wobbly and stuff. But I think that can be done with staff. In terms of the rear yard, um, I was, I, I think I'm okay with it as is, but I think that, um, Diana has a good point, and I think the solution to it would be pretty simple. If they took the porch off the, uh, top level and set it back a few feet, I think it would feel a lot more, uh, in line with its neighbors. But because, um, the block does have some variation in height and is a commercial block with a rather unusual donut, uh, that, that's pretty much predominated by the armory, which is monstrously larger, I, I'm, I'm okay with it as is. I think it would be better with the setback, but I'm okay with it as, as, as is.
Okay. Commissioner Ginsburg?
Uh, I, I agree with Commissioner Bland's comments in general. I think it's appropriate. Some details need to be developed, and I can accept the, the rear of the structure as is. I mean, there may be ways that one could make it better, but I don't think this is bad.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, it's the same here. Um, the only thing I would, uh, see is, uh, let them work with staff to see in terms of the bulkhead and then the setback and the detailing on the front, especially the storefront. We have very good staff.
Okay. All right, so I think, um, we have enough to support this today with the condition that you continue to work with the staff on the storefront detailing and the cornice detailing and general, all of the detailing. So Vice Chair Bland, would you make that motion?
I will. In the matter of, uh, four thirty-one Seventh Avenue in the Park Slope Historic District Extension, uh, this is an application to construct a new building. Uh, I note, uh, that the east side of Seventh Avenue between Fourteenth and Fifteenth Streets consists of a variety of three, uh, to four-story buildings constructed between the nineteenth and twentieth centuries, which were built for or later converted to, uh, residential use. Staff, I further note that, um, all of the buildings feature relatively small and widely spaced punch, punched window openings and a facade organization utilizing the vocabulary of base shaft and termination cornice. I recommend approval, noting that the construction of a new building will eliminate a gap in the street wall supporting a unified streetscape in keeping with the character of the historic district, that the proposed proportions and individual floor heights will help create a harmonious transition between the neighboring buildings, which feature facade elements and finestration that do not match or align, that the street facades, uh, predominance of brickwork, punched openings, finestration pattern, and prominent cornice and vocab, and vocabulary of base shaft and termination capital will be consistent with the immediate neighboring buildings as well as with other buildings within the streetscape. That the proposed light beige finish, finishes of the brickwork, terracotta, and cast stone, and dark brown finish at the cornice, uh, windows and ground floor will be in keeping with the range of finishes typically found within the streetscape and harmonious with similar color palettes at the neighboring buildings. That the simple detailing of the facade elements and limited use of the terracotta elements of spandrels will provide a level of articulation that is compatible with the character of the streetscape. That the composition of the ground floor, including wide masonry, uh, end piers, a tall metal signboard, and metal infill, uh, featuring a large tripartite window with bulkhead, transom, and entrance, will be consistent with the organization and character of commercial bases at neighboring buildings throughout the streetscape. That the penthouse bulkheads inside and rear facades will be simply designed and feature a gray stucco finish typical of secondary facades within the historic district, and will have a subordinate presence in views through a gap in the street wall at Fourteenth Street and at a distance along the avenue. That the long views along Seventh Avenue, the size and the penthouse and bulk, uh, sorry, the size of the penthouse and bulkheads will be compatible with the context seen within this, within the streetscape. Rooftop views, which feature variations in building heights and rooftop accretions. That the rear facade will be approximate, will approximately align with neighboring rear facades and will be consistent with other rear facades at the block in terms of its stucco cladding, division between floor levels, punched openings, and the uniform finestration. That the height of the rear facade extending modestly above the neighboring facades will not overwhelm the neighboring buildings or detract from a uniform row, and that the proposed rear balconies will be simply designed and recall the character of firescapes, a common feature found at the rear facades of buildings at this block and throughout the historic district in terms of their placement, size, materials, and details. And finally, that the applicant will work with staff to refine the details of the, um, storefront facade and the cornice.
All right, thank you. And Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
Who's second?
All right. Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Bland?
Aye.
Mr. Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Seven in favor, none opposed, the motion passed.
All right, that's approved. Thank you. Right, and we're gonna now move back to our research agenda to, um, for our research public meeting item for a proposed designation.
Thank you, Sarah. Uh, item number one, hello, on our public meeting, is the, uh, LP two six seven eight, the Hekshire Building, now the Crown Building, at seven thirty Fifth Avenue, AKA seven twenty-eight to seven thirty-four Fifth Avenue, two to four West Fifty-seventh Street in Manhattan, block twelve seventy-two, lot seven five oh three, previously thirty-nine. Item proposed for designation is an ornate French Renaissance-style skyscraper designed by Warren and Wetmore and built in nineteen twenty to twenty-two, and presenting is Matthew Postle.
Good afternoon. Rising on the southwest corner of Fifth Avenue and Fifty-seventh Street, the Hekshire Building, now called the Crown Building at seven thirty Fifth Avenue, is one of Fifth Avenue's most visible and striking skyscrapers. Topped by an ornate octagonal tower with a perametal roof, the Hekshire Building was designed by Warren and Wetmore. At the public hearing on April ninth, twenty twenty-four, three people testified in support of designation, including a representative of the owner, as well as the Historic Districts Council and the New York Landmarks Conservancy. Manhattan Community Board Number Five also sent a letter expressing support. Subsequent skyscrapers by this prominent firm, all New York City landmarks, include the Aeolian Building at six ninety-one Fifth Avenue, the Con Edison Tower on East Fourteenth Street, and the New York Central Building at the foot of Park Avenue. The Hekshire Building was commissioned by the Anahama Realty Corporation, a syndicate backed by the developer August Hekshire, who the New York Tribune described as, quote, "probably the largest individual holder of office buildings in the city", as well as builder George Backer and Charles D. Wetmore, a partner in the architectural firm of Warren and Wetmore. Construction began in nineteen twenty and was completed in nineteen twenty-two. Designed in the French Renaissance style to complement the chateau-esque Vanderbilt mansion, which originally stood directly across Fifty-seventh Street, it was also one of the first skyscrapers to conform to the nineteen sixteen zoning resolution, which required that tall buildings reduce their mass as they rise. With multiple setbacks starting at the thirteenth floor, this glorified chateau, as it was described in the journal Architecture and Building, descript, demonstrates how a leading art, Beaux-Arts firm interpreted the new law and its impact on the emerging Fifth Avenue shopping district. Based with limestone and cream-colored terracotta, notable classical features include spiraling columns, figurative sculptures, and rows of decorative spandrels. The perametal roof incorporates large dormer and bullseye windows on each side, as well as an elaborate multi-story chimney stack and a crown-like finial. Planted as stores, showrooms, and offices in early photograph, the tiered Hekshire Building soared above its neighbors. It was one of the first tall commercial buildings in this section of Fifth Avenue, anticipating the redevelopment of the area in the nineteen twenties. The New York Times called it a, quote, "radical change", and the Real Estate Record and Guide commented that it would be, quote, "in many respects, the most beautiful business building which ever graced this prestigious thoroughfare." For several years, six rooms on the twelfth floor were rented to the Museum of Modern Art, which held its inaugural exhibition here in November nineteen twenty-nine, devoted to Cezanne, Gorgens, Surratt, and Van Gogh, as well as Modern Architecture International Exhibition, which introduced New Yorkers to such leading European architects as Le Corbusier and Mies van der Rohe in nineteen thirty-two. The Hekshire Building was renamed the Crown Building in nineteen eighty-three. At the time, many of the architectural features were gilded, and the facades were illuminated at night. Converted to a hotel and residences in twenty twenty-two, it remains a notable landmark dominating the intersection of Fifth Avenue and Fifty-seventh Street. The Hekshire Building is located on the southwest corner of fifty-seven, of Fifth Avenue and Fifty-seventh Street. The tax lot incorporates an annex on West Fifty-sixth Street, seen at left, which is not being considered as a part of the proposed designation. So that's the one with the black lines, uh, around it. At the public hearing, the owner of the retail spaces supported designation and noted the need for future flexibility for tenant storefront designs. The designation report notes that since the Hekshire Building was completed in nineteen twenty-two, its various owners have made many changes to the commercial storefronts, and the current storefront infill is nonhistoric. The proposed designation recognizes the history of storefront changes here in keeping with the evolving cap, character of Fifth Avenue and Fifty-seventh Street, which supports flexibility to accommodate future needs. Completed in nineteen twenty-two, the Hekshire Building, now called the Crown Building, is a significant early skyscraper designed by Warren and Wetmore and an important part of the midtown Manhattan skyline. The research department recommends its designation as an individual landmark.
Thank you very much, Matt. Commissioners, any final questions on this one? Or thoughts?
Thoughts.
Thoughts? How about thoughts?
Just now, it's coming to us. It's not already a landmark. It's unbelievable. It's history, it's extraordinary beauty, and, and the fact that the, that MoMA really started here is, I mean, all of this is so worthy of being landmarked.
Completely. Any other thoughts?
When I sit in my dentist's office and he's drilling my teeth, I see that building.
Does it make you feel better?
The beautiful gold pieces of it. It's gorgeous.
It is, and it, it's a, it's a real standout in the street, and I think it's Yes. kind of a, already a landmark with a lowercase L, and hopefully today will become a landmark with an uppercase L. Um, it really does stand out in the streetscape, and I think really does reflect, um, you know, the significance of early twentieth-century architecture in New York City and how it really contributed to the city's vitality. Designed by incredibly significant architects. It's gonna join a collection of other early towers and skyscrapers designed by Warren and Wetmore, and, um, and reflects that period after the nineteen sixteen zoning, when architects creatively and in, in an innovative way rose to meet that, those, uh, parameters, creating really an iconic skyline in the city. Yes, Vice Chair Bland?
If you could go back to the, uh, the storefront slide, yeah, that one. It seems as if the original architects made it easy for us here, because isn't this great? Uh, the, the overall idea of the storefront can be maintained, unlike so many of the lower levels of so many Fifth Avenue and other, uh, historic districts. Here, the, the basic framework, I think, can be maintained, whereas the infill can come and go as our city changes, uh, along, uh, eras in the future. So the, it seems like the, the, the original architects made it easy for us to, to, to do this, uh, unlike so many other buildings.
Yeah, and, and, and the current owners have done a, a great job sort of restoring that architecture, restoring that framework. And so, like with many, um, designated buildings that have commercial bases where the infill has historically and even more recently changed on a regular basis, I feel confident that we'll be able to work with the owners to meet their needs in the future. All right. Yes, Commissioner Jefferson?
What is the precedent, uh, occupancy of the building? Apartment buildings or...
It's, um, Kate, do you want to address that?
It's an Amman Hotel, um, and it's, so it's a hotel and residences in the tower, and then the lower floors are retail, so really kind of major flagship retail stores.
All right. Okay, well, if, thank you for all in agreement. Commissioner Jefferson, would you make a motion to designate?
So moved.
Well, actually, I think we need to read the motion, and Kate, if you don't have a copy, I think I have a copy here. Okay.
As part of the development, heritage, and cultural characteristics of the city, state, and nation, as set forth in the designated report for LP dash twenty-six seventy-eight dated May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. I also move that the borough of Manhattan tax map, tax map block twelve seventy-two, lot seventy-five oh three, be designated as its... be designated as its landmark site, as described in the designation report and illustrated in the attached map.
Thank you, and Vice Chair Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right.
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Bland?
Aye.
Mr. Chapin?
Aye.
Mr. Chen?
Aye.
Mr. Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Mr. Jefferson?
Aye.
With seven in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
All right, that's our newest New York City landmark, and I'm delighted. Thank you so much, and thank you, Kate and Matt, for bringing this item to us. So we're going to now do a little bit of housekeeping. We're going to close the three hearings from this morning, now that we have enough commissioners present. So Kate, I think what you need, just need to do is read research, to research hearing items into the record, and then we will make a motion to close the hearing.
Item number one, two-six-eight-one, LP two-six-eight-one, the Temple Court Building, now the Beekman Hotel atrium at five Beekman Street, AKA three to nine Beekman Street, one nineteen to one thirty-three Nassau Street and ten Theater Alley, Manhattan Block ninety, lot seven five oh three. And Mark, do I need to read the whole description?
Okay, great. All right, and so we, we held the public hearing earlier today and had testimony and support from a number of people, including the owners, which we were very happy and welcomed, and, and the owners have, as we've heard before, lovingly restored this and rehabilitated this building. And so we're happy to have that testimony, and we'll now close the hearing. We will accept written comments up until the designation vote, but for the purposes of this hearing, we're going to make a motion to close it. So Diana, Commissioner Chapin, would you make a motion to close the hearing? Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you second that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that hearing is closed, and we'll move to the next one.
Item number two, LP two-six-seven-nine, One Wall Street Banking Room Interior at One Wall Street in Manhattan, Block twenty-three, Lot seven five oh one, AKA seven Lot and Park.
Right, and again, this item had a public hearing this morning. We were welcomed, lots of testimony and support, including from the owners and the Hildreth Mayor Association, which was very exciting. So we're going to close the hearing today, and we will continue to accept written comments up until the vote. So Commissioner Ginsburg, would you make a motion to close the?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this hearing is now closed, we'll bring it back for a vote in the near future. And now we have one more.
Right, and that was public here, Preservation Department's Public Hearing Item Number One. This was the proposal to initiate rulemaking pursuant to the City Administrative Procedures Act, opposed amendments to Chapter Two of Title sixty-three, the rules of the City of New York consisting of amendments to existing rules, including amendments relating to the installation of bus shelters.
Right, and we held a public hearing on the proposed rules for bus shelters this morning, and we will now make a motion to close the hearing at the end of today. And, and that, and then we will also, after this, review the testimony. The staff will think about changes, and we'll bring the final proposal back forward, back to the commission in the near future. But for now, we'll close the hearing, we're going to make a motion to have the hearing be closed by the end of today. So Commissioner Goldblum, would you make that motion?
So moved.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that hearing will close at the end of today, end of business today. And I think we'll now move back to our, our public meeting or public hearing agenda, and we'll turn it back to Cory.
All right, thanks. I previously noted some schedule changes. We are going to move back to our public meeting agenda, but I will note that we had scheduled public meeting item number one. That was LPC twenty-three dash oh-nine-five-two-eight-twenty-seven Cranberry Street in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. That will not be presented today. Instead, we will move to public meeting item number two, LPC twenty-four dash zero-five-four-nine-four, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Queens, block eighty-nine-five, lot seventy-three, Nineteenth Circle Road in the Dougliston Historic District. This is a colonial revival-style freestanding house designed by George J. Hardway and built in nineteen twenty. Application is to legalize the installation of a retaining wall and parking pad, removal of a tree, and installation of a fence at the side yard without LPC permits, and the installation of a gutter system at the terrace. This was last presented at the public hearing of April ninth, twenty twenty-four, and no action was taken at that time. Turn it over to the staff to present the revisions.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, make a way, Precipitation Department staff. Please note that the previous proposed gutter system is no longer being pursued by the applicant and has been removed from the application. The proposed fence and gate will be relocated and can therefore now be issued with a staff-level permit. Here shows the location within the historic district. The revised proposal is to remove the retaining wall, install without LPC permits, and to construct a new stepped CMU retaining wall clad with brick to match the base of the building, reducing the current width of the driveway by three feet six inches. The gap will be filled in with soil graded and plant. Here, a closer photo shows the new retaining wall will be aligning where the gutter is and step down towards the sidewalk, so it will be around here. The close-up photo shows the exposed concrete wall and the stepped dirt will be covered by vegetation and structure. Here shows the previously presented plan drawing. This was previously presented, showing the original driveway was eight feet wide. Currently, the driveway has been extended by nine feet six inches, a total of seventeen feet six inches. And here is the currently proposed plan elevation. The proposal is to remove the blockwork and enlarge plan that's following up here. So here, an enlarged plan showing the reducing, the expanded driveway by three feet six, where the new retaining wall will be built. The expanded driveway will be reduced to six feet, original nine feet six, together with the old driveway, which was eight feet wide. It will be a total of fourteen feet wide, wide enough to accommodate a wheelchair by side of a parked car. And the last slide shows the elevation, shows the retaining wall is to step down with guard rail, and the highest part of the proposed wall will be five feet and will slope down towards the sidewalk. Deona Deonary, Richard Audrian is here to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, you may recall this application, we didn't see it too long ago, and it was to legalize sort of three components. There were the gutters and leaders, there was a fence up at the line of the property, up the line of the house, the front facade of the house, and then there was the expansion of the driveway at the garage to accommodate access into the house. And we discussed last time how this house sits up on a elevated site with these sort of tiers of terracing. And so we had concerns about the placement of the fence and the leaders, and then the width and resulting retaining wall at the garage. And so they have set the fence back so that it meets the rules and will get a staff-level permit. They've eliminated the leaders, and so we're only looking at the driveway today, and they are reducing the width of the driveway by three feet and integrating planting and railings into a stepped retaining wall. So are there any questions for the owner, or do we want to, need to just go to our discussion? All right, not seeing any questions. We'll go ahead and, and we talked last time about the need for accessibility, and so I think there was some openness to a wider driveway, but not as wide as was presented at the time. All right, so we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Chen, would you like to start this one?
Well, I'm glad to see at least the driveway is being reduced, and I think the adjustment being made, and I think it's made the case simpler. Just, I encourage them to continue to work with the staff to, to continue to improve on the details.
All right, Vice Chair Bland?
Yes, I think it's now appropriate.
All right, Commissioner Jefferson?
I think it's appropriate.
Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, this is such a peculiar situation to begin with, but I think that the changes they have made and the commission's recommendations have, you know, made it as appropriate as it can be in the circumstances.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Agreed. I would just remind the staff to make sure that the brick is a good match to the existing, and the coping is properly detailed, and again, consistent with the materials of the house.
And Commissioner Ginsburg?
I agree with my fellow commissioners, appropriate.
Okay, all right, so I think we can make a motion to approve it with the condition that they continue to work with the staff on the detailing and final brick approval.
In a matter, LPC twenty-four dash oh-five-four-nine-four, Nineteenth Circle Row, Dougliston Historic District, the application is to legalize the installation of a retaining wall and parking pad, the removal of a tree, and the installation of a fence at the side yard without Landmarks Preservation Commission permits, and the installation of a gutter system at the terrace. Noting the buildings, buildings' style, scale, materials, and details among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Dougliston Historic District, I recommend approval, finding that the removal of the low garden retaining wall did not damage, eliminate any significant architectural features of the site or the building, that the tree which was removed was unhealthy, and its removal from the site, which features several other mature trees, has not detracted from the character of the site or streetscape, that the width of the driveway relates to the need to accommodate the use of a wheelchair from a parked vehicle, that the height of a new stepped masonry retaining wall will provide gradual transition along the adjacent landscape features to the garage and to the sprayed plain, plan, and the end post will make the existing wall at the other side of the entrance, that the new retaining wall will be clad with red brick to match the historic brickwork at the adjacent garage wall, and the brickwork be at the step, at the step halfway of the house, that the proposed black painted iron railing atop the retaining wall will be simple in design and in keeping with other railings of the site, and that when the work is completed, the soil will be graded and replanted and to harmonize with the surrounding landscape on this portion of the circle drive, which is characterized by steep yards and with densely planted vegetation. I also recommend that the applicant continue to work with the staff, especially on the, the, the details and the, the type of brickwork.
Thank you, and Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right.
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Bland? Mr. Chapin?
Aye.
Mr. Chen?
Aye.
Mr. Ginsburg?
Aye.
Mr. Goldblum?
Aye.
Mr. Jefferson?
Aye.
With seven in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved, thank you very much. Thank you, all right, we'll move to the next item.
Okay, and again, this is going to be a schedule change, and noting for Abbey, we're moving to two oh two Riverside. So we're going to skip ahead to public hearing item number seven. We have a couple of remote applicants we're going to take advantage of using, since we're moving around a little bit. Item seven is LPC twenty-three dash one-one-nine-six, one-one-nine-six-five, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, block twelve fifty-two, lot five, two oh two Riverside Drive in the Riverside West End Historic District. This is a Bozart-style apartment building designed by George Appellum and built in nineteen oh five. Hold on just a sec, please. All right, my confusion, it's, I'm going to correct myself. It is actually public hearing item number eight, LPC twenty-four dash zero-seven-four-seven-five, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, block eleven eighty-five, lot fifty-four, three twenty-seven West Seventy-Sixth Street in the West End Collegiate Historic District. This is a Renaissance revival-style rowhouse designed by Charles T. Mott, built in eighteen ninety-one, eighteen ninety-two, and the application is to enlarge an existing rooftop addition.
Okay, Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. Terrence, you now have control of the presentation, you just need to click on your screen.
Okay. I.
You see where you just need to click on the screen and the presentation in front of you?
Oh, I'm not seeing it, now it looks like it's sort of frozen, okay.
Maybe we could have Emma advance the slides for you? Would that be better? Oh, no, you have it now, great.
Advance the slides, okay, I'll go back to the beginning. I don't seem to have control now, so can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
You still have control, Terrence, you just need to, you can use the arrow keys on your keyboard, that might be easier.
That might be easier, okay, so there we are. Okay, so we'll start from the beginning. My name is Terrence Harston, I'm the architect representing the owner at three twenty-seven West Seventy-Sixth Street. First of all, I'd like to thank the commission for your time and consideration, and Emma and Bernadette for getting us here. So this townhouse, what we're proposing to do is a rooftop, which is currently an elevator bulkhead, to extend that to the property lines and turn that into an interior space, which will serve as a den. In doing that, we also have to make the chimneys code compliant, so we're adding flue caps on top of the chimneys to bring them above the current height of the existing roof, which is three feet by code. So in doing that, you do see a portion of the chimney cap from the street, from the south side of Seventy-Sixth Street, from somewhere in the middle of the block, which is shown on our later slide, you can see a portion of that blue cap, which is extended above the roof line by three feet. The block plan just shows the block, this block actually is a continuous street wall, so the additions and the proposed changes are not viewable from the street, except for the portion that faces Seventy-Sixth Street on the south side. And these are the proposed enlargements. The upper left is the elevation with the new chimney caps, and below that, there's an elevation showing those chimney capped extensions. Floor plan with the, with the salmon area showing the portion of the roof bulkhead, which is being enlarged. So it's approximately a hundred square feet that we're adding to that space. And the red line here on the upper right shows the extent of the, of enlargement. Currently on the CFO, there is a hot tub with the penthouse, that's being removed. So we're going to remove the hot tub and the platform, extend that wall, use the same stucco finish materials and colors. There will be a, a series of glass doors that opens up to the existing roof terrace, and the new flue caps, which extend above the existing roof three feet. That's in the rear yard facing the donut. And those are views facing the donut, looking northwest, looking northeast, and then looking directly at the proposed enlargement, which is the area marked in, in red. From the south roof, this is where you see a mock-up of the new flue cap, which extends above the, the new roof height. So this is the portion that's visible from the south side of Seventy-Sixth Street, and you can sort of see on the photo on the right, the portion that extends into the visibility zone. And here, there are a series of photographs which show the extent of the visibility, roughly the south side of the street, about, I would say, a third of the block, in the middle of the block, you can see it's partially obstructed by some vegetation, and there's some ongoing construction there that obstructed from the west side. From the center of the block, it's more visible, which is shown in the, in the last two series, the last two photos in this series. And this massing diagram just shows in salmon the proposed enlargements and alterations. And are there any questions? That pretty much covers the, the extent, the rest of the work is interior renovations.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Yes, Commissioner Ginsburg?
For that front chimney that's fairly visible, would it be possible to?
With that front chimney that's fairly visible, would it be possible to angle it back to make it less visible?
We did look at that, but because of the height and the code requirements, it's, there's still a portion of it that's visible. We're certainly willing to entertain that, but we did look at a couple of series of angling it back with this chimney consultant, and it was still visible, and from about the same corner of visibility as if you were to go straight up.
And when you looked at it, is, did you see the angled portion from that view, or do you just see the top of it?
You see the angled portion, and then you see the top.
Okay. The question is
You sort of see where it goes back, so it, I mean, it goes back at an angle, and you kind of see where that angle bends. I mean, it's, it's, it's visible, what we thought was to the same degree as if we had gone straight up, so that's why we chose just to go straight up.
All right, any other questions?
Yeah, on that, just on that same line, if you are doing an interior renovation, is there any possibility of angling it back within the within the body of the building?
We didn't really consider that. It could be proposed to the chimney consultant. I'm assuming that would be a probably a bigger amount of work, but it would, it'd be possible to look at that, yes, we certainly will entertain that.
If you're doing a, you know, a gut, a gut renovation of the interior on that upper level, it should be feasible, I think.
It's not quite a gut. This property was purchased by the client from a previous owner who had, was midway during an alteration, and it kind of eighty percent done, and there was a divorce, and it was sold, and so he's completing their work and doing additional. All right, thanks.
Okay. There are no other questions. We'll move to public testimony, and I'll note that there is no one in the hearing room to speak on this item, but I'll turn it to Gregory to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. We have one remote participant with their hand raised, that being Megan Fitzpatrick from Landmark West. Megan Fitzpatrick, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record, and you have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners, Megan Fitzpatrick, speaking on behalf of Landmark West. The Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee believes that because this rooftop addition is not visible from the street and that it organizes a chaotic roofs, roofscape, we can support its approval. However, the front chimney flue is prominently visible and believe this can be moved back while still adhering to the building code. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I do not see any further hands raised, so I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Seven recommends approval, and with that, I'll bring her back to you, Chair Carroll.
All right, thank you. So the testimony was fairly supportive with the one comment about the chimney. So I think we've had a discussion about that. I don't know if there's anything else you'd like to add at this time.
No, not on our end, so I think.
All right, okay. And Commissioners, any other final questions? Okay, so I think we'll move to our discussion. So Commissioner Jefferson, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the hearing is closed, and we'll begin our discussion. This is a fairly straightforward proposal to enlarge the existing addition by removing some other accretions on the roof and filling in that space and extending the chimneys. So we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Goldblum, would you like to start this one?
Sure, I think that it's a very modest and reasonable proposal, and I think it it's appropriate. However, I think the applicant should work with the staff to see if visibility can be reduced on that front chimney flue.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
I agree with Commissioner Goldblum.
Commissioner Chen?
Same here.
Commissioner Bland? Commissioner Chen?
I agree.
And Commissioner, okay, I think we're all in agreement. So we'll make a motion to approve the proposal and ask the applicant to work with the staff to explore ways to minimize the visibility of the front chimney flue.
Very good. So regarding three twenty-seven West Seventy-Sixth Street in the West End Collegiate Historic District, the application is to enlarge an existing rooftop addition. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the West End Collegiate Historic District. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features. But except for the flue extension, none of the work will be visible from the public thoroughfare. The enlargement of the existing rooftop addition will be modest and setback in the facade, maintaining the sense of the building's original massing, and that the cumulative effect of the proposed enlargement in conjunction with the existing rooftop and rear added additions will not overwhelm the house or neighboring buildings. However, I recommend the applicant work with staff to see if it is possible to remove or reduce the visibility of the front chimney flue.
Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Bland? Mr. Chapin?
Aye.
Mr. Chen?
Aye.
Mr. Ginsburg?
Aye.
Mr. Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
With seven in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
All right, that's approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That concludes our morning session. We will now break for lunch and resume at one thirty, and we'll ask all members of the public who wish to return after the lunch break to voluntarily exit the meeting at this time so that you don't experience any technical difficulties returning. I advise if we remove you, and we'll see everybody at one thirty.